The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, September 22, 2015. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Reverend Wood, please.
Fred Wood, Pastor of Riverbank Free Holiness Church, thank you for this opportunity. Let's bow our heads for a word of prayer. Father, we thank you, God, for this meeting. Thank you for this mayor and the city council. We're praying tonight, God, that you would give them wisdom from above. We know your wisdom is first pure and gentle. And we know, God, that you're able to give them wisdom to help this city in the days ahead. And God, as you're looking down, you see the end from the beginning. We're praying that you'd help them make the right decisions on every part of this agenda and give them a special blessing from you. And we thank you, God, that you're here amongst us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call.
Council Authority Member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barber Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Conflict of interest: any council authority member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing that, we're going to move on to presentations. And we have item 1.1, which is recognition of Mr. John Digley, will not happen tonight. Mr. Digley could not appear. So we'll go on to item 1.2, Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month. We have representatives from the manufacturing community here, some of you. Come on up, all of those who are up. I want everybody here from Dayton Superior, sir.
I'm your train man.
Okay, I know you are.
Yeah. I get this is quiet town.
Thunderbolts, good. All right, so we have some of the main manufacturers here in the City of Riverbank. And this is to all of you, and I have individual recognitions. Whereas manufacturing day is celebrated nationally on the first Friday of the month of October to showcase manufacturers and increase awareness of manufacturing careers. Whereas manufacturing jobs are critical to the economy and provide living wages with long-term career opportunities. Whereas manufacturing sector includes food processing, milk processing, beverage manufacturing, nut processing, paper products, food packaging, plastic products, steel products, and et cetera, and of course fantastic cabinetry, are the backbone of the economy. Whereas increasing awareness among students, parents, and community of local manufacturing career is essential to encouraging manufacturing pathways. Whereas increasing opportunities for all to gain knowledge of their manufacturing career within their immediate surroundings. Whereas coordinated and aligned efforts of public and private organizations is needed to collectively address challenges of the skilled labor shortages. Whereas filling skilled job labor shortages require aligning and leveraging the efforts of public, private, and nonprofit organizations. Whereas by working together with manufacturers, educational systems, workforce investment boards, economic development corporations, Chamber of Commerce, and other public and private organizations, the skilled labor shortage for the short term can be solved and long-term solutions can be developed. Whereas shortcasing the regional commitment to manufacturing in the San Joaquin Valley will encourage local expansion and attraction from other markets. Now therefore, the City of Riverbank, of the City Council of the City of Riverbank does hereby declare the month of October as Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month throughout the City of Riverbank. Signed today by me, September 22, 2015. Can we get a copy of this for each one of them, or an original? For Dayton Superior. And you are?
Ron Fife.
Ron, from the, I'm gonna read this to Dayton Superior and then hand out one. For Manufacturing Awareness Appreciation Month, presented to Dayton Superior Corporation in celebration of Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month, the City of Riverbank thanks you for your investment in our community on behalf of the City Council, 22nd day of September, 2015. Sir, thank you very much. Sir? You know, it's been a while.
It has.
And you have something on your face you didn't have the last time I saw you, I think.
No, I always had it.
Not when we were young.
Yeah.
Yes, I am.
They said the train man, which is a joke for Richard. I'd love to see Riverbank become a quiet, get a quiet zone from the railroad. Help support it.
Those weren't your words. But I would like you to comment if you will on some of what you want us to concentrate on as a city council, as a city during not only October but in the future. And trains are part of it. You have a couple of minutes to say a few words, please. Into the microphone.
I'm Mike Monshyne with Monshyne Industries. My father started the company in 1964. I was a whopping four years old. Now that I've gotten older, I've gotten facial hair and so forth. And, but my wife and I bought my father out three years ago. He's enjoying retirement now. But the City of Riverbank, my parents bought the property in '78. It's been a fantastic city. We've helped the city achieve some grants for the sewer extension down Patterson, Roselle Avenue. And we've contributed to the war memorial for the fallen soldiers, the pool, the skate park, which is a great thing. But the city is just, it's a great, great city. And you guys are doing a great job. Let's just see a quiet zone. That would be wonderful because our office is right there and it's, oh, I'll tell you, it's a nightmare. You're on the phone and you gotta say, "Hold on a second," and let the train go by. And I think everybody in the city would love to see that. But thanks for the great job. Thank you for this, Richard. And thank you very kindly. Thank you.
My name is Vince Brown, and I'm here on behalf of the owner of Thunderbolt Wood Treating Services, Leonard Lavallo, who could not be here. He's taking a bit of a vacation. We're grateful to the City of Riverbank. It's been an excellent place to build a business. Leonard started Thunderbolt Wood Treating Services in 1978. And I guess what is the nicest part about it is we feel that the City of Riverbank cares about employers, building the community, and having jobs and business ventures be successful here. And that is somewhat of an uncommon thought process in America unfortunately today. So I want to thank each and every one of you for this and for recognizing Thunderbolt's contribution back to the city. Thank you.
I'm Ron Fife, representing Dayton Superior. Just give you a brief on our company, actually. We're located in the old ammo plant here in Riverbank. It's kind of odd. It's in the City of Riverbank, but yet it's a modesto address. If you were to look it up, anyway. We work closely with the LRA quite a bit. You know, they run the ammo plant. It's part of the BRAC, you know, Base Relocation and Closure Act. So I don't really have much to say. I know the City of Riverbank, we do appreciate, you know, your cooperation with us, the LRA, you know, definitely work W. Olson a lot. Have a lot of our employees, majority of our employees are Riverbank residents, so. And unfortunately, we do also work with Sierra Northern, though, the railroad that comes in. We have a lot of track system inside the ammo plant, and they come in and they bring us a lot of steel. What we do is, we found our concrete reinforcement in the construction industry. We build the reinforcement structures that go on the bridges, the roadways, and the airport runways. So our main customers are the DOTs, all the states, you know, Washington State, Caltrans. I don't wanna get too technical because I don't wanna bore too many people, so. As I said, we appreciate it. If there's any questions for us, you know, feel free to ask, so. All right, thank you.
Moving on. To walk the school day proclamation. Do we have representatives from the various schools? Dr. Camp, you can't hide. That's right. Come on. Sir, good to see you. Good to see you again.
Hi.
Richard O'Brien.
Hi, I'm Renee from Doctors Medical Center.
Okay, very good. All right, this is an important proclamation. There all are. Whereas the City of Riverbank holds the health and safety of its students as a chief concern. And whereas the lives of hundreds of children could be saved each year if communities take steps to make pedestrian safety a priority. Whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems amongst children. And being able to walk or bicycle to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine. Whereas driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution. And whereas an important role for parents and the community is to teach children about pedestrian safety and become aware of the difficulties and dangers that children face on their trips to school each day and the health and environmental risks related to physical inactivity and air pollution. Whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school and evaluate walking and bicycling conditions in their communities. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Riverbank does hereby proclaim that Walk to School Day is October 7, 2015, throughout the City of Riverbank, and as such encourages everyone to promote the safety and health of children today and every day. Signed, September 22, 2015, by me. So I'll give it to you, since you are representing the entire Riverbank Unified School District, and you're representing, and you're here from the medical aspect. Before I let you and you speak, what I would like you, everyone, to consider, one of the schools that are in your school district is so far out that there is not a safe way to get to school. Going, students or residents from Riverbank who go to Enoch's High School can't walk to Enoch's High School because we've done poor planning of incorporation and also getting safe routes to schools. But there are other areas that are incorporated that have good, safe routes and others that we have to improve, and we fully understand that. So Dr. Camp, before you, if you want someone else to speak first.
Okay, sure, all right, very good. Hi.
Come around here, so you're, no, you can speak into the microphone because you're gonna be on CNN.
Okay. Exactly what I wanna do. My name is Rena Lovehart. I'm a registered nurse. I work for Doctors Medical Center in the Trauma Services Department. Doctors Medical Center is also the lead agency for Safe Kids Stanislaus. Safe Kids Stanislaus was the agency who got the grant funding in order to do International Walk to School Day. It's a grant that we also received last year, but this year we brought it to Riverbank. And we were able to team up with the Riverbank Language Academy School. And so we're going to do an international Walk to School Day event at their school on the 7th. So we have numerous sites that the kids are all gonna start from, and we'll have our agency members meet them there and walk them safely to school, teaching them about pedestrian safety. We also have organized an assembly for the children at the school with a DJ, doing fun games and prizes. And in and amongst, we're going to have somebody from the sheriff's office doing a presentation on pedestrian safety. I will be doing a presentation on pedestrian safety as well as Halloween safety. And possibly somebody from Memorial Medical Center talking about bicycle safety. So, yeah, we're pretty excited about it.
Very good. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Keenan Crick. I'm the Program and Grants Manager for Riverbank School District and Casa del Rio Family Resource Center. And Rena had approached me regarding Walk to School and the partnership with the Safe Kids Coalition and Doctors Medical Center to, in a sense, sponsor RLA for the Walk to School. Last year, we had the privilege of doing Walk to School with Darlene Barber Martinez, and we coordinated that at both California Avenue Elementary School and Riverbank Language Academy. And we're gonna continue that this year. So in a sense, with the partnership with Doctors Medical Center, we're now able to put more efforts at California Avenue and kind of duplicate what we're gonna be doing at Riverbank Language Academy. So it's a great opportunity to create awareness around health, safety, prevention, and allow the students an opportunity to walk or bike to school and create some awareness for them on their routes. We have three selected routes at Riverbank Language Academy and two selected routes at California Avenue Elementary. We invite everybody here, council members, to be a part. It's definitely a great asset to the community. Cal, you participated, I think, last year and helped with the walk. So we definitely appreciate that and look forward to everybody participating again this year.
Thank you.
Dr. Darrel Camp, Superintendent of Riverbank Schools. I just want to say on behalf of our school district, thank you to the City of Riverbank, to the council, to the city manager for encouraging the Walk to School Day, encouraging safe routes a year round to Walk to School. And thanks for joining the over 4,000 communities across our nation and even beyond our nation internationally for participating in Walk to School Day. So thank you again.
All right, I'm just gonna briefly go on the next one. We don't have someone to receive this proclamation, but it's for the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection. Report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and 15. And during the month of October, I know there's a lot of awareness for cancer, breast cancer awareness, as well as cancer awareness. Take the time and the opportunity to get to know more about the cancer researchers that are available and that are affecting our community directly. So with that, I'll go back up and continue. Item 1.5, 2015 Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival Street Closure and Traffic Plan Update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. We have with us this evening Chris Ricky of Chris Ricky Presents, who is handling the Cheese and Wine Festival in cooperation and in contract with the City of Riverbank. So, Chris?
Mayor, council, thanks so much for having me tonight. Just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the street closures for the Cheese and Wine Festival. We're really excited about our plan this year. We tried to take the most important pieces of your street closures, which are event goer safety and then neighborhood awareness and trying to make the least impact on your businesses and on your residents of the event area. So I feel like we've done a really solid job of making a plan here. And I want to give you a few examples. If you look at, on Santa Fe Street, you've got senior housing that is between, I believe it's Second and First, I mean, it's Second and Third Street. If we'd used a different plan and not left that alley open in between Topeka and Santa Fe, those residents wouldn't have been able to drive their cars into the back of the resident area. And so especially for seniors that live there, that would be really difficult for them to have to park off-site and not be able to get to the residences. So we try to, when we plan each street, we try to think about how we can eliminate inconveniences and increase safety. Another example is if you look at Topeka, let's say you lived at the corner of Topeka and First Street. You could, you still can turn right on First Street and turn right in the driveway, that house right there on that corner. So we wanted to make sure that it was convenient for those residents that live on streets like Topeka, streets like Sierra, that they can get to their houses. That's really important. We also did a lot of planning in terms of the times that we close the streets. So like, when we close the streets on Friday night, we don't close the streets early in the afternoon or in the evening. We try to close them after people have gone to bed so that has the least impact possible on your businesses and on your residents. So then we'll set up the event that night. That'd be actually technically Saturday morning. And that'll, again, decrease impact, which is what we want to try to do. In terms of specific street closures, if you look at it, what we've tried to do is plan the street closures around the businesses and around their needs. If you look at like the cheese factory that's located on Santa Fe, we made sure to leave that alley open so that their trucks can get in and out, make their deliveries if they need to on Saturday. We also made sure that there was some flow there on Second between Stanislaus and Santa Fe so that the wedding that's gonna take place on Saturday at Antigua, that party can go ahead and go forward and that celebration can be successful for them, even though there's a big festival going on. So we've talked to a lot of businesses, we've talked to a lot of residents, and what we've tried to do is create a plan that creates the least impact for everyone involved. So do you have any questions about that specific part of the street closure plan?
So circulation can happen down between First Street, on First Street, from Stanislaus up to, oh, heck, well, at least up at Santa Fe by bypassing the traffic closure on First and on Stanislaus?
Yeah, that's the idea. The reason why we closed the streets there was Chief Kylie's recommendation, based on last year, that we closed the intersection at First and Santa Fe due to people just speeding through there, and he felt it was really unsafe. So that's why we took his recommendation and said, "We will do this because you think that's what the safest choice is." So like, I think for the church there, they're gonna have no problem getting in and out of the church. It is gonna be a little bit less convenient for them than, say, on a normal day, but they will be able to be successful and get in and out.
Where are the markets, the grocery stores?
The grocery store is on Third Street between Stanislaus and, I'm not sure what the street is below that. Is it Sierra? And they are, I mean, they're unaffected by the festival in terms of normal flow. Will there be more traffic in the area because of the festival? Yes. Will their parking be impacted due to people parking for the festival? Yes. But will people still be able to drive to the market? They will.
And you've said that Chief Kylie looked at this for security and safety?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of security this year, we're once again looking at the plan and making some improvements. And I feel like our security plan, we're gonna take what we learned last year and make it even better. I'm real confident about that, and he likes what we're doing with it. I mean, other changes from last year is we slightly increased the fence area at the corner of Santa Fe and Fourth. Because our Hispanic Heritage area was so successful last year, we needed a little more space for our dancing horses and our bandas. So we've kind of just moved a little bit. But again, those residents that live on the corner of Fourth and Santa Fe, they'll still be able to get into their driveways and function, so. Although they are gonna see, they're gonna have dancing horses in their front yard, which actually I think is kind of cool, but. And then the other street closure that we talked about, the Santa Fe and First, that area, because we had to close that area, I think we got a real positive out of that because now we're gonna be bringing the skate park into the event. And that skate park was a great investment by the city. But this is an opportunity for us at a city event to really showcase this area with a great skate demonstration that's gonna go on in the skate park on Sunday. And so we're really excited, and we're gonna be using that as one of our marketing tools. But I also think, for the festival. But I also think it really shines a nice spotlight on that area that you guys have, which is really, it's a fantastic skate park.
I appreciate the improvements that have been made over last year. I think it looks really good.
Right on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Item 2, Public Comment. No action can be taken at this time. Members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the City Council and staff. Mr. Mayor. I'm here to give the welcome to Pope Francis in the name of Riverbank because nobody else seemed to be so happy and so glad and so blessed of having an event like that in the United States. I'm writing to him in the name of the City of Riverbank for him to visit next time he comes by, to visit California, not to leave us behind. And the main subject that I started with was with the streets. I see that there is gonna be a Walk to School Day. We even parson rode a place that we all drive from there sometime or another. Some of us walk by there, but we had to go across the street to the side of Monshyne because on this side is ugly. Has Vegas in there. Las Vegas is those prickly bushes that roll in the desert. Think, what do you call them? Prickly bushes, I call them. And it's not a cleanup that is so hard to do. But people just have to come around, they're going to the street with dangers for the cars that are going west on Patterson Road. It's in a place that has been abandoned for a while. You go across from Patterson Road from Roselle, it changes the name to Railroad. It's all of that area there, all the way to the railroad tracks. I don't see how you can live with this. I can't because I live just a few blocks from there. And whenever I come over, you don't pay attention to what I say anymore. You don't do any action because I am just making the comments in here. If I go to Ms. Anderson's, it's gonna be the same or worse because nobody heard me. At least here, I hope I'm there on Channel 2 or something like that, that sometimes at the riot's market, they tell me, "It's on TV." I say, "I never came on TV. I didn't get any presentation or anything." Oh, no, because of the city council meeting. "Oh, thank you." I say, "I didn't know that you were paying attention." There's a pole on Patterson Road in the west, the west corner from Howard, where a man got ran over last year. It was dark, was one of the things that I had to take into consideration. The pole is so close to the little car wash type of thing. It's still in the very corner. There's a stump of a pole used to be where it's supposed to be in a corner. There's a stump of a pole used to be where it's supposed to be in a corner, like in the, like in the corner there, but it's not. Doesn't matter, that has been months already, and there is no answer to that. I know that PJ and he has the jurisdiction and that this and that, that it takes a long time. Well, get it started, so it takes less time than a long time. It's a shame that this man, who was here, Eminem, I call him, Mr. Michael Moineson, that he has been there so many years and has to be taking the noise of the train, that's another matter. Do something about it. It is possible. Escalon Dosce, a smaller city, Escalon has more millions of dollars, no, they can get the money, as you can get the money. Never mind the liability, this is not going to come. It's going to be much safer and a lot more peaceful for all of us that live in the area. I don't know if you can get in touch with him, maybe he might get some connections on the long, many years that you have known him, and do something personally about it. If not as a City Council body, or at least as a mayor, at least as his friend, that you have for a long time. He brought you a simply, in just a few words, that I have brought you three, maybe four times already, in three years. But if something can be done about it, it would be very much appreciated. Don't let it go on deaf ears, please. To all of you, I beg you, I plead to you, fix up those streets, clean them up, before you get children hurt in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is William Johnson. I am from Oakdale, actually. But the reason why I'm here today is I am the District One Representative for the Stanislaus County Veterans Advisory Commission, as appointed by Supervisor Bill O'Brien. I'm here to thank the city for allowing us to have our October 26 meeting here in these I would like to invite all of you, city staff, mayor, and anybody else who would like to come, especially veterans, to come to our commission meeting that day. It starts at 5:30 PM. I would also like to personally thank the Riverbank Parks and Recreation Department for, especially Juanita Agüimido, for their help and assistance in procuring this meeting place. I would also like to personally thank and commend Norma Torres Manriquez for her help as well. For those of you who don't know, the Veterans Advisory Commission is a seven-member board, appointed by the Board of Supervisors, started on April 3, 2012. Our purpose is to represent all veterans as advisors to the Board of Supervisors in all matters veteran-related. Our meetings are held on the fourth Monday of each month. And to better serve all the veterans, we hold it in different, in the different districts. Every other month, it's at County Center 3, and that's where our next one will be, if you can make that, on October, on September 28th, at 5:30. Anyway, we like to alternate, so every other month, it will be in one of the districts. Next month, District One is hosting it. We have selected Riverbank, and you guys have worked with us, where your Parks and Recreation Department have been very helpful in getting that for us. The commission, with the backing of the board and county staff, is accomplishing a lot of great things. I don't know if you read the article today in Modesto B about the Veterans Center we're trying to establish, that the county is pushing and helping us with. It's going to serve all veterans, the, it's going to be, county, veteran services will be in there, veterans and aging. Also, all the different, the American Legion, the DAV, VFW, the Marine Corps League, and all the veterans organizations will have a meeting place. There'll also be a banquet room for hosting events to help raise the funds. Today, the Board of Supervisors approved MOUs, Memorandum of Understanding, with Modesto, the Veterans Nonprofit Group that we've established, and with the county, to go ahead and start collecting, or actually put out proposals for a building. Other things that we do is, we have an outreach committee that tries to reach out and let veterans know all the different services that are in the county, that are available to them. We have a transportation committee, which has acquired a couple of buses that are wheelchair-accessible to take veterans to Riverbank, to, sorry, to Palo Alto, Livermore, even Fresno, if that's where their appointments are, to help veterans. Anyway, I'd like to thank you again for allowing us to have that meeting next month, and I really think that you would, if you'd come to our meeting that day, that you'll see what we're doing, the county's doing, what the veterans organizations are doing, it's really good. I mean, we're helping veterans, we're helping communities, and so, I think you'd be really proud of what the county's doing, and maybe there's something Riverbank can do to help the veterans also. I really liked the memorial, that's a great piece of work, thank you very much. As a Vietnam veteran, it's heartfelt. Anyway, also, when we have a meeting in a city, we are, even in the district, we want to recognize a veteran who has done outstanding work for veterans, or anybody in the community who has done good things for veterans. I have application forms, if you know of anybody that might fit that bill, I'd like to have it back by October 8th, so we can decide on who the recipient's going to be. And anyway, I just want to thank you, the city, Parks Department, and the council, for allowing us to do this. And please, come to the meeting. Denham will probably have, always has a representative there. Kristin Olson sometimes has a representative there. We have representatives from all kinds of different places, and it's, it's a really good thing. I think you would really like it. But once again, thank you very much. Appreciate your time and allowing us to do that.
This is public comment, but we are allowed to make a comment on the presentation?
Yes.
Because I have comments on the cheese and wine.
Yes.
It's not up there anymore. I hope you can remember the map and stuff. Okay. I live on Topeka, my First Street. The way they had it last year, the way they have this year is they have it shut down except for coming First and Second coming off of 108. So first of all, you're going to have cars coming down First, down Topeka, Second, back up to 108. That makes us a extra highway, constant traffic. Plus, you have the tasting down there at the Masonic Building now, which is going to make us a parking lot. That's a lot of traffic. There's a little bitty space there. Second, the fire department is on the other side of Third Street. Now, last year, they told us that they were going to put a movable barricade at Third and Topeka in case of emergencies, they could just move it, get down there. They didn't do that. They put vendors up there instead. So what they're going to end up doing, because they did have to have an ambulance down at the senior apartments last year, they're going to have to go back up to Fourth Street, up to the highway, and then come all the way back down to Second to get down in there. Got to block up and block down, they shouldn't have to take, and every, sometimes when you have a medical problem, every second counts. They shouldn't have to add extra travel time. The other issue we had last time is the lighting and the noise from the carnival. The lighting was pointed directly at our backyards and our houses. Noise, we have the carnival, and it was an adult carnival, and it was a band, I mean, a stage was just a few paces off Santa Fe there from Second Street, there's a band. So we had the music from both of them in there, and it was loud. It was loud to the point, my husband was ill, I had to take him somewhere else, because we couldn't even get rid of the noise by closing our doors, turning the TV on. And I talked to Sue, and she did, she was real helpful, she did everything she could, she said she was going to make changes. So this year, they tell me, "Okay, we're going to have a kiddie carnival there instead of the full carnival." But when I go on your website for the cheese and wine, it shows pictures and everything for a full carnival, just like last year. On top of which, now we have the stage and the carnival again. We're going to have the cheese, the wine tasting, which is going to have its own music. And now I hear you're going to have a wedding, which is probably going to have its own music. And you're going to have a skate park thing over there, which is going to have its own music. First of all, is there some way where you can combine all these streets and just use one music for everything? Do we have to have all these different sources of music at the same, going on? Do we need the lights shining at our houses all the time? I'm only 100, there's 125 feet from Santa Fe to the alley plus the alley to our houses on there, and I'm not the only one that complained last year either. And when I asked last year and tried to talk to Mr. Richie Valley, and he was told I wasn't, I was told, "I'm not impacted." Well, I'm impacted front and back. And I've been to these cheese and wine things since they started. I've been there, was living there before they even started these things. And we've never had this kind of a problem. We've had cat country back there on, on Santa Fe there by where the church is now. We never had any of these problems like that, even with all the people there and everything, not like last year. And now they're going to add all these other venues with more music and more noise. And as far as him talking to residents, I doubt he talked to anybody on Topeka, because he sure didn't come to my house, and I've been probably one of the most vocal ones.
Any further public comment? Thank you for those of them. We move on to item three, Consent Calendar, consistent with item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of August 25th, 2015, City Council on Local Redevelopment of 30 Minutes. Item 3C will not be voted on tonight. We're going to pull that and have that presented at a later date. Item 3D, a resolution of the City Council of the City Riverbank appropriating $6,500 from the wastewater system development fee, 207 reserve, for the preparation of a soil condition study for the California Avenue sewer line extension. Are there any questions or comments on the consent calendar? So any public questions or comment on the consent calendar? Saying none, I'll bring it back to the council for action on items 3A, 3B, and 3D.
I make a motion that we approve our consent calendar items 3A, B, and D.
I second that motion.
A motion to approve items 3A, 3B, and 3D, in a second.
Council authority members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Before we go on to item five, item eight, which is the closed session, is not required tonight and will not happen, but you can still comment on that when it's, it is appropriate. Item 5-1, consideration of the, of an ordinance amending Title V, Public Works, Chapter 51, Sewer Sections 51.03, Rates and Charges Established by the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances, and two, consideration of the ordinance amending Title V, Public Works, Chapter 52, Water Section 52.61, Fees and Charges Established by the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Mayor, members of the City Council this evening, Mayor Selah Garcia, our Director of Finance, will provide an overview of the sewer and water rate ordinances that are being proposed for your consideration this evening in response to the outcome of the public hearing and City Council direction provided at the August 25th City Council
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight is one of the final steps as we continue to consider the proposed rates for water and sewer. I just wanted to give a brief overview of the timeline that we've had to date with regards to the rate proposals that were presented to the City Council. Back in June of 2014, the City Council authorized staff to proceed with the preparation of the water and sewer rate studies. In April of 2015, the initial rate proposals were presented to the City Council for consideration. At that time, we, staff was directed to review the rates and bring back some revised rates that would allow for the increases to be smoothed over the five-year period in order to minimize the impact to the residents. In June of 2015, those revised rates were presented to the City Council based on the feedback. July 2015, we began the Proposition 218 Protest Hearing Notification as required by state law, which gave all property owners 45 days in which to come in and protest the proposed rates. And then in August of 2015, we held the protest hearing, at which time, we did not receive enough rates, enough protests, excuse me, in order to continue on this path that we are here today. How were the rates developed? The rates were developed to ensure that we would continue to have sufficient funding for operations and maintenance of our sewer and water systems, for necessary capital improvements, for debt service on current loans that are outstanding, and those that we may need in the future for those capital improvements, as well as emergency reserves should an emergency arrive, arise out of our sewer or water systems. Included in that rate development was making sure that there was revenue sufficiency, that the right, rates would cover the annual cost of the service. Rate impacts, the rates were designed to minimize as much as possible the impact to our residents, that they would be equitable, that the rates would be fairly allocated amongst all of the customer classes here, based on their estimated demand on future services, that they would be practical, so that they would be simple in form, easy to administrate, and easy to understand by our residents. And also, in terms of our water services and our water rates, that they provide an incentive to conserve water and use it efficiently. So first, we'll discuss the sewer rate ordinance amendment. Just to give you a brief history on our sewer rates, the City of Riverbank has not raised its rates since 2008, and that was based on a Consumer Price Index adjustment that was authorized by the City Council. The current rate for a single-family dwelling is $20.15 per month. We currently do have a rate that's allocated to customers located outside of Riverbank, of which we have about 112 customers that do fall under that category, and their rate currently is $21.26 per month. The proposal moving forward is that there be one standard rate regardless of whether they are in the city or out of the city, since they would be considered residential, and there would be no additional impact that they create on our current system. Our commercial customers, in addition to paying a base rate, also pay a variable rate, which is based on water usage. So based on their current classification, such as commercial, or hospitals, or automobile service facilities, they pay that volumetric rate based on water usage. There is also an industrial rate that is charged for our industrial customers, based on the industrial permit that they receive from Public Works. Our sewer operations and maintenance fund over the past fiscal years has suffered some, some deep structural deficits. This is where the revenue that's coming in is not sufficient to meet the outgoing expenses, and this in reality does focus on just those expenditures that are annual and ongoing, and so they really are operations and maintenance items. At a minimum, your rates should cover those ongoing maintenance costs, because they are, some of those are pretty fixed in nature, such as utilities. In the future, we are continuing to estimate that there will be a deficit that's going to be experienced should rates not be raised. And so, given the financial forecast that was prepared in the rate studies, you'll notice that the line in orange that goes across at about the $2 million mark reflects the revenue that we are anticipating to be receiving in the upcoming five years through 2020, should rates not increase. The cost for operating and expenditures, operating expenditures is reflected in the green color, so we do see a little bit of the revenues coming in slightly higher than that, but they are not unfortunately enough to meet operating expenses and our current debt service, which is reflected in the red. That is where we would come into some significant issues with our bondholders and our loanholders, where we would not be able to make debt service payments to them. The area reflected in blue, that is, those are the capital improvements. The area reflected in blue, that is, those are the capital improvements that are being projected. And we are showing here the 2014-15 simply as a base point, because that's when the rates were steady. So we were looking at a comparison figures for 2014-15, and those are not reflected as, as the reason why our rates are increasing. It's just for comparison purposes. So 2014-15 shows a large amount of capital expenditures. That's due to the wastewater treatment plant energy efficiency project that we undertook. In terms of sewer capital improvements, looking at the next five years, and the rate study did take these into consideration, we're looking at proposed capital improvements of about $6.7 million. Those are segregated amongst high priority capital improvement projects and additional capital improvement projects. The high priority projects, as are listed here, include projects such as equipment protection, finishing the pond at wastewater treatment plant, and cross connection study. And just to give you some more information on a few of those, there are cross connection reduction program, which is a four-year program we're looking to implement at a cost of about $800,000 over the four years. It's required by the Regional Quality Control Board that a study be done on all of our sewer lines to detect any potential cross connections with our storm drain lines, which must be corrected. The photo below shows us a picture of what that study would perform, and they use a smoke test in order to determine whether those lines are connected. The completion of pond number nine at the wastewater treatment plant at a cost of $98,000 is also listed as high priority. The completion of pond, of this pond will allow for expanded capacity at the wastewater treatment plant in preparation for, for future development. Some of the additional sewer capital improvement projects that are listed here are really line replacements. They will address aging infrastructure. About 50% of the city sewer lines were built before 1960. These aging lines are in need of a replacement in order to avoid any costly sewer spills that may occur. The lift stations keep our sewer flowing towards the wastewater treatment plant for treatment and disposal, and so there are some monies that have been requested in order to upgrade those lift stations, particularly the utility panels. So the five-year program to replace our lines is about, close to $4 million, and about 1.3 has been allocated towards upgrading our sewer lift stations. We currently also have outstanding debts, just for our residents that are in the audience, as well as those that are watching us on TV. Cities do borrow funds in order to have enough monies to provide necessary capital improvements upfront. It allows the cities to complete major projects immediately, rather than having to wait a number of years in order to collect sufficient monies. These loans are typically obtained from private banks, from bonds that are issued to investors, and we also have loans that we've, low interest loans we've received from the state of California. These loans are typically repaid over the lifetime of the improvement, in some cases up to 15 to 20 years. And so currently, the annual outstanding debt service over the next five years, you'll notice we have four pieces of outstanding debt. The first is a 2005 Notice of Violation Bond. This bond was received in order to address some issues at the wastewater treatment plant, particularly with the accumulation of sludge and some of, some of our ponds. And so we required the issuance of bonds in order to take care of the removal of that sludge. These particular bonds were refinanced in 2014, at the same time that we issued, that we obtained a loan for the wastewater treatment plant energy efficiency project. The 2005 bonds that were refinanced actually end in 2020, which was the initial ending date for that 2005 bond. So we did not extend the term of that bond. It does end with the final payment in fiscal year 2019, 2020. The energy efficiency program, at a cost of about $335,000 per fiscal year, will be ongoing, but this, these reflect the debt service amount for the next five years and have been incorporated into the rate study. We also have the State Water Resources Control Board loans that were obtained in 2001 and 2002. Despite the different dates in which they were obtained, they were for the same project. It was for expansion of our wastewater treatment plant. And, and that particular loan ends in 2021. So we would have one final year of payments, and then those loans would be fully paid off. We also have an internal loan that was obtained from our special building fund to the sewer fund. That internal loan was also for our wastewater treatment plant expansion, and it ends in 2018. So we do still have two full fiscal years of payments, and then one final $4,000 payment in fiscal year 2018. And then that one will be fully repaid. So on average, you'll look at the debt service that's owed per year. So it comes out to about 750 on average, but it ranges between 783 to a low of $708,000. So the rate proposals that were presented to our residents for their consideration, and then to the City Council at the August 25th protest hearing, and which is the, the basis for the ordinance amendment tonight, is looking at rates that would increase from the current $20.15 to a high of $49.48 at the end of the five years. That final rate increase would be effective July 1st of 2019. Over the, on an annual, or excuse me, on a monthly basis, the first rate increase would take effect November 21st, 2015, at an increase of $5.64 to our residents. July 1st, 2016, we would see an additional $7.22. On 2017, it would be 7.27. In 2018, $6.84. And 2019, a final increase of $2.36. And this base rate would apply to all of our residential and commercial customers as well. In addition, the commercial customers would also experience a rate increase on their volume rates, which is based on their water usage. We've grouped them from individual classifications into various groups based on State Water Resources Control Board guidelines. And so we have, for example, Group One, which is our schools without cafeterias and offices. They have one volumetric rate that's been established for them. And then we also have, for example, restaurants with full kitchens who, who have a different rate that has been established for them as well. Future rate increases for them beyond 2016 would be the subject of a second Proposition 218 notification for them. And this just reflects a survey of surrounding cities and other utility districts, and where our rates would fall in terms of their current rates. So this doesn't take into consideration any future rate increases that they may be considering And that takes us to the water rate ordinance amendment that's being proposed tonight. Our, just some history on the water rates, is that water rates have, have not increased since July of 2010, also due to a Consumer Price Index increase that was approved by the City Council. We currently charge our customers a bimonthly flat rate based on meter size, which includes up to 1,000 cubic feet of water. And then anything exceeding 1,000 cubic feet, we charge on a declining block volumetric rate. So as they use more water, we actually charge them less. Similar to our sewer fund, our Water Operations and Maintenance Fund has also been suffering from some significant structural deficits. The past fiscal year, we did have a nice surplus of $89,000, but this current fiscal year, we're only estimating a surplus of $3,000. Similar to our sewer fund, should we continue to have increasing annual operating costs, and the rates would stay the same, then we would have to fund our operations from our reserves. And our reserves would be diminished by 2017, 2018. And at that point, we would not have sufficient funds in order to meet our annual ongoing Water capital improvements that have been included within the water rates include high priority improvements of 6.3 million, and additional capital improvements of almost $6 million. These high priority capital improvements include, the biggest of them being the water meter reading system. We also have some necessary line replacements for those lines that we have had on our radar for quite some time that need to be replaced. And so we have placed those into the, the high priority category. And just to give some background information on the water meter reading system, since it is the largest portion of that high priority, and really of the entire list of capital improvements that's being presented. The current water system that we have, 71% of the water meters are at least 10 years or older. 13% of the meters that we have are less than 10 years, and most of them, most of those will probably be in the crossroads area, which is our newest development. 16% of the water meters that we have, we weren't even able to determine the age. We still have a lot of water meters in the downtown area that are manual reads, and so we have to physically walk those routes in order to obtain the reads. And so we know that those are most likely at least 30 to 40 years old. In 2013, our success rate in reading all of our water meters was only 80, 80%, and so that was two years ago. They've been failing significantly since then, especially in crossroads, where they're now starting to, to come of age in terms of when they were installed. This is our current meter reading process. You'll note it's an eight-step process. It's multiple days, and it's multiple staff members on each day who work on this process. Our water department staff reads meters six months out of the year, which means that they are only maintaining our lines and our wells the other six months of the year. Our meter reading process every month takes 320 man-hours. Other duties that they also have to perform during the month on top of meter reading is replacing those malfunctioning meters, attending to our water turn-ons and turn-offs that we have for new residents and those that are moving now, delivering door notices and working on the shut-off list, and investigating complaints. So we have a staff of four, and then a supervisor that keep very, very busy every month. The proposed system would install a fixed network. Each home would receive a upgraded water meter that would be electronic and be radio read, and so they would upload readings to this fixed network every 15 minutes. A resident can go, would be able to log on online and look at their water usage in 15-minute increments, in hourly increments, daily increments, whatever their preference would be. Our residents would be able to establish their own limits as to their water usage, and if they're, they go over their consumption, they would get an email or a text advising them that they've gone over their, their established limit. They would also be able to view their, their billings online and be able to compare water usage from one year to, to the next. From this fixed network, the finance department would be able to download all of the readings within one hour, and probably less. Really, it's at the push of a button. And so our water meter process would go from an eight-step process to two steps. Some of the additional capital improvements that we've included also address aging infrastructure. With our water lines, we inherited a lot of those water lines from the Riverbank Water Company, which was in existence in the early 1900s. Replacement of the water lines will, will ensure that leaks do not occur, and the lines can continue to deliver safe and reliable drinking water to all of our residents and businesses. Part of the water meter upgrade project is also in the installation of a leak detection system. So we would get early notification if there were any potential leaks in our water mains, which would help avoid customer complaints where they see that water is flowing in the street. And it would also be able to give us a plan of attack as to those areas that need to be addressed immediately. The rate proposal, as I mentioned, is based on meter size, and so these are the rates that are proposed for anything that's one and a half and below. We have two-inch meters and three-inch, three, four-inch meters that are typically residential, I mean, excuse me, commercial. And then we have the variable charge, which would be based on the water that's used over 1,000 cubic feet. We've also included a drought surcharge, and I'll go into more detail on some of these. But I did want to highlight that the typical single-family residents will have a one and a half or smaller meter. The base rates for single-family homes are being shown as follows, and so the initial increase we would see in November of 2015 is $5.12. We would then see an additional increase in 2016 of $2.96, and then a final increase in 2019, which would be $1.29. So it would go from $14.65 a month to $27.07 a month for the base rate. And this is the rate survey that was reflected for our surrounding areas, as well as some of the other water utility districts. And then I'll just go into some frequently asked questions. Some of these questions I took directly from the Proposition 218 protest notices that we received, so I wanted an opportunity for those residents that submitted those to be able to see what, what the answer was to, to those particular questions. So one of the first is how will this increase affect my bimonthly bill? We've been talking about monthly rates. And as you know, the City of Riverbank bills bimonthly because we're not able to read meters every month. And so looking at a bimonthly bill, currently, we bill for three services, water, sewer, and garbage, and the current base rate is $111.99. As of November 1st, 2015, we would see that minimum bill every other month would increase to $133.52. In July 1st, 2019, that two-month bill will be $195.50. At this point in time, we are considering alternatives in terms of monthly billing. Once a water meter, once a water meter project is installed, if the rates are approved, we would be able to facilitate a move to a monthly billing, should the City Council like to consider that particular option. In addition, there has been a recommendation that we look at allowing residents to pay over a two-month period, rather than having them pay the full bill in one month. And so we would be looking at something similar to when you get your property taxes, where you get a double stub. So you send in the first stub, but the, whenever your first payment's due, and they give you the due date, and then you send in your second stub when your second payment's due. And so we'll be looking to do something similar that we would be presenting to the City Council if they'd like to consider that as well. Another question that we got was, with so much construction occurring, why can't the new residents pay more instead of our current residents? Unfortunately, Proposition 218 doesn't allow us to do that. The rates have to be equitable amongst all of the customer classes, so all of the residential classes need to pay the same rate, because that's the way the law is established. We're not allowed to charge one resident more than another. We're not allowed to charge one resident more than another. The variable rates is where that will change. If you have a family of, that has numerous children, probably uses more water, or perhaps has a pool, or has a larger yard, they will most likely use more water, and so, the variable charge is where that will be captured. They will be charged a higher rate, not a higher rate, but they will pay more for their water usage in comparison to a single person who may live in a smaller home, or a senior who lives alone. The third question we got is, people have seen many businesses, new businesses that are going to come to Riverbank. We just had a great article in the Riverbank News that it will be coming out tomorrow, that I got to see on Facebook today, that, you know, touts all of the wonderful things that are happening out at our crossroad shopping center. Some residents wonder why we can't pay for our water and sewer services with all that sales tax that might be coming in, or property tax that comes in. And just to give a brief overview of how the city receives its funding, we get our funding from a variety of sources, some of which is legally restricted as to how it can be used. Some of them are restricted by the state, for example, gas tax, whenever you fuel up, the City of Riverbank gets a little portion of that. But the state does not allow us to spend that on general items, or on water and sewer. It can only be spent on streets. Sewer and water funds are considered business-type funds, so what we would be looking to do there is that they generate at least enough revenue to cover our ongoing operations and maintenance, our capital expenses, our debt service, and our emergency reserves. And so, this just kind of gives you a little picture of the different buckets that we have, and mind you, the city has probably over 60 buckets that we have, and each one can only be used for a specific purpose. So, in this case, we have what's called the general fund. It's our main bucket. That's where all of our property tax, our sales tax, and what's considered discretionary funds go. And what discretionary funds are, is that the city council has a purview as to where they would like to allocate those funds. But mainly, those funds go towards paying for police services, our parks and recreation, and just our general administration. So, our sewer fund, money's received from our sewer service charge and our industrial permits, has to go into a separate fund, and it can only go towards operations and maintenance, debt service, and capital outlay for our sewer system. And the same goes for our water fund as well, is that any sewer, water service charges and any fines and penalties can only be used towards our water system. A lot of people wonder what our sewer and water funds currently pay for, and I apologize that this picture is a little dark, but our sewer fund, which is the graph reflected on the left, we have about 28% that currently goes towards capital outlay, 30% that goes towards staffing, 20% that goes towards maintenance, and 21% that goes towards debt service. On the water side, we currently have 42% that goes towards capital outlay, about 20% towards maintenance, and 36% goes towards staffing. The reason why the staffing levels are higher on the water fund is because the water fund employees are dedicated employees to the water system. Currently, our sewer system actually has shared employees. We share our employees with our street system. And so, those employees were only allowed to allocate a certain portion of their costs towards the sewer fund, and then, the other balance is paid through our gas tax fund. And then, there's a lot of question on what this drought surcharge is. As a lot of people may know, the state has declared an emergency, which has prompted our residents to decrease their water usage throughout the city. This decrease in water usage, while it protects our water sources, it also leads to a decrease in revenues to the city. Despite the decreased usage, we continue to have ongoing monthly maintenance that needs to occur on our system. And so, the drought surcharge will provide the funds to cover the revenue loss during those times when water is being conserved. Now, this fee will only be imposed during declared states of emergency by the state. It will commence when the declaration of the state takes effect, and usually, they give us a date when that declaration will take effect, and it will be lifted once the emergency declaration is lifted. So, once the state declares that the emergency has terminated, then that drought surcharge will terminate to our residents as well. And so, tonight, our recommendation for the city council is that you consider the first reading of the two ordinances that have been presented to you in terms of water and sewer rates. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, very detailed, very informative. Thank you. Are there any questions on the item 5.1? This is time for the public to come up and make your comments on item 5.1.
Good evening, Mayor O'Brien and city council members. I don't know that much about it, but I would like to object to the installation of changing our water meters. I can't, I just can't see why that would be such a big problem. We've always had our meter readers, and from all these years, it hasn't been that much of a problem. So, with that aspect, I really object to the changing of the water meters. I just think that what I've heard with over $600 per meter, that seems a lot to me. So, thank you very much for that.
Good evening. My name is Ramon Bermeudez from the City of Riverbank. And ladies and gentlemen, I come with a heavy heart here because of meeting our income, but I read everything about it in the Riverbank News, about this proposal to increase the rates. I have a total of $83.51 in a little bit over four years, and that gives us about $20 increase per year. Even though you put it a little bit less, and a little bit less, and a little bit less, it still is a big increase. So many of us who rent, are owners anymore of a house, we still pay for that, because the owner of the property is not going to, "Oh, okay, well, they're raising the rates, I'll have to take that." No, uh-uh, I'm going to show you to the inquilinos. I'm going to have to, the ones paying for it. Don't think that by us staying so quiet, and by not so many people being able to answer to this call, is going to go away. The protest is here. You're going to put so many hours of workers simply to change those meters. Hey, repair it, make it newer ones, but don't get rid of those people, they're going to be without a job then. Those are so many hours that you want to be putting people out of work, or their job. In the part that I heavily relay on these people that come over and take it, as such, from PG&E, there have been changes on the meters, and they tell me, "Just check it on the internet." I don't have a computer. "Oh, Cole, you know, you can write it." And, "No, it's not my job. You don't pay me to do that. I pay you to do that." That you can do, "No, I cannot do nothing. You do it, and do it the right way. Don't mischarge me." The same way for the water, it should be the same for PG&E. Don't mischarge me. Go and check that meter every time that you come over and take the reading. That's what you do. And that way, it won't go, it won't go wrong for nothing. You will avoid from it to go wrong by preparing for it. But this is too much money for all of us. I heard somebody in the newspaper say about the elderly, "We're all getting there, and they're always taking advantage of us." And they, I say, as you officials also, consider that, if you have a heavy heart, put that heart in the right place, put it for good things. Do us a charity of not charging more, but try to do with what you have, with what you are being charged right now. We are paying enough. Please, I ask you, we are the most vulnerable. At your end is the babies. We're tired of being overcharged for something that we don't take the advantage and the benefits of. The benefits are being paid. Do it. The money is there. Do it. Don't charge so much for so little. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment? Might I bring this back to the council for a recommendation and/or action? This is to accept the first reading, correct?
Introduce the, introduce the, both of the ordinances.
Read up there.
And I will so move.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 5.1 to consider the first reading and introduction of an ordinance amending Title V Public Works, Chapter 51, Sewer Sections 51.03, Rates and Charges, and consider the first reading and introduction of an ordinance amending Title V Public Works, Chapter 52, Water, Section 52.61, Fees and Charges. Before we go on, there's, um, some, to the response to the water meters, as they're failing, they have to be replaced. Rebuilding them isn't practical. It costs more to rebuild than it does to replace, and you have more flexibility. Manpower is expensive. If you take it away to read a meter, they can't fix a water leak or sewer leak. The reason for a lot of the changes is to prepare us for the future. And in the future, believe it or not, the state will be requiring anybody who pumps from the ground to pay for it, to not only to the state, but to the county. So, we have to be very cautious of how we can prepare our citizens in the future, as well as maintain what we have. Some of our infrastructure is over 60 years old. I know I'm falling apart, I know that is too. So, it is important, and we haven't had an increase in, what, seven years, almost eight years? I did some math while I was up here. If we were doing the math right now, our sewer rate would start, like, be at $25.83 with just a cost of living increase. Okay, that's doable, that's over, but you would have been paying that over that last, what, six years? And your water would be starting right now at $18.37. That's what you'd be paying today. And again, you'd have your increases on an annual basis. We didn't increase it just because we could increase it because of cost of living. We increased it because we did a study, what is needed, and where we're going. And I know it affects a lot of people, it affects every one of us, and maybe if we did a state, a rate study in 2000 or earlier, we would not be as far in debt as we are. But that's where we are, I'm sorry, but rate studies are the way to know where you have to go, without excesses. So, we have a motion to approve and a second.
Excuse me, who was the second motion?
I seconded it.
Thank you. Council members Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.2, a resolution of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California authorizing the preparation of an updated municipal service review, MSR, and application to Stanislaus County LAFCO to expand the City of Riverbank's sphere of influence.
Mayor members of the city council, this item as well as a follow-up to a discussion that occurred last month in regards to looking at the city's future growth patterns and being able to prepare for potential smart growth over the next 10 to 30 years. This evening, Mr. John Anderson, our consulting planner, will provide an overview of the proposed sphere of influence expansion. The action that the city council is being asked to consider this evening is to initiate the process, which is a lengthy process involving multiple agencies. So, at this point, I do want to just clarify that any action taken tonight does not actually make it a fact, it just initiates the process to proceed. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Jill. Mayor members of the council, my name is John Anderson, J.B. Anderson Landis Planning here tonight, representing the City of Riverbank as a consulting planner. This is a follow-up to a discussion that the council's had for nearly a year. It was definitely an item that was on the strategic planning session this last March. We had a workshop on this particular topic on August 11th, and tonight's discussion is just a continuation of the same issue and topic relative to the city's sphere of influence. Normally, I'd start at the beginning and go through this process, but I think it's important in light of some of the communication that we've seen at City Hall and from others to kind of talk about, you know, this process and what is it. The sphere of influence is nothing more than an anticipated area of service. In order to annex property, it has to be within a jurisdiction sphere of influence. Tonight's discussion will be the first time where we conduct a public hearing where we're asking the council for specific direction as to what you believe would be appropriate for a sphere of influence. The next step, which is very critical, is that according to state law, we're under obligation to update a municipal service review. It's a specific document that talks about service levels that are currently available, and service levels that would be available to accommodate future growth within the sphere of influence that's been identified by the city council. That document, once it's completed by staff, will be presented back to council for review and approval before ultimately, an application is submitted to Stanislaus County LAFCO for SOI expansion. When might that happen? When might that occur? It probably would be, you know, two to three months down the line, so we're in September, so it would be probably around December, perhaps January, before that would come back to your council. And then, a formal application would be filed and presented to LAFCO for action. Doesn't annex anybody's property at his first step, and it's clearly defining what the city's future growth might be within a defined area. So, after having said that, I want to go through my presentation tonight. I'm asking the council to conduct a public hearing. This public hearing has been properly noticed. I'm asking the council to adopt an official resolution, which gives staff clear direction on what your intent is relative to the sphere of influence, so we have that for our records and for historical records in dealing with this issue specifically. The sphere of influence, or I should say, the municipal service review was completed by Stanislaus County LAFCO under contract with the city, and was ultimately adopted June 26th of 2013. But it really reflected the sphere of influence boundaries that the city had established back in 1997. So, since 1997, there's been no adjustments in the city's sphere of influence, and that happened primarily to accommodate the development of the crossroads development, which was part of a large specific plan and annexation. Most of the crossroads development is now complete. There's few infill properties that are yet to be developed, but they're very, very minor. I would say 99% of that project is now finished. The sphere of influence includes about 708 acres, of which 307 acres is considered, and this is gross, there's a lot of numbers I'm going to throw at you, and there is a clear distinction between those lands which are gross acres, which includes right-of-way and railroad right-of-ways, and those which we believe truly are buildable, which would be lands excluding railroad right-of-way, street rides-away, and other types of uses that theoretically wouldn't deliver residential units, commercial, or non-residential development. So, the sphere of influence of 708, 708 acres is broken down into a couple different categories. Primary sphere of influence, which is 307 acres, which would be development areas that you would consider within the, you know, 0 to 10, 10 years. And then, future growth areas, which would be 401 acres, which would be And then future growth areas, which would be 401 acres, which would be 10 to 30. The map that represents those two areas is illustrated on the screen before you. This is a map that was blessed or approved by Stanislaus County LAFCO and clearly represents city's sphere of influence, again, since 97. There's a couple areas here, I think, like, well, a couple areas that probably won't be annexed for a while, and that's simply because, you know, folks don't feel they need to annex. Doesn't, they don't appear to have problems with services, water, sewer, and therefore they continue to be within the city's sphere, but still within Stanislaus County's jurisdiction and not within, under the jurisdiction of the City of Riverbank. The sphere of influence, this is a land use table that represents, you know, all the various land uses within the existing sphere of influence. And again, the clear distinction between what we're talking about with gross acres versus net buildable acres. So within that land area, I've pulled out 52 acres, which is pretty much made up of the River Heights area. They may or may not choose to annex. Right now, they're fine. They have their own water and sewer facilities and, you know, they, as far as I'm concerned, they can continue to conduct their lives as they have for years. What does this mean? This means that within our existing adopted sphere of influence, I believe, based on this table, we have about 363 acres available to be developed. That's, of course, if services, water, and sewer are available and those properties wanted to physically annex to the city. That's what our current inventory would consist of. What we talked about in the City Council on August 11th was expansion of a sphere of influence to include two primary areas. Crossroads West, as we all know, the city has taken action to approve an advanced funding agreement to authorize staff to process a specific plan of 380 acres to include an area called, for lack of a better term, Crossroads West. This is a project that we're currently working on. There's a number of infrastructure issues. There will be a specific plan. There will be an EIR. There will be a whole host of hearings and discussions on this project. It's ongoing and staff is actively pursuing this. The industrial to Eleanor, this is an area that we've talked about primarily because of the impacts associated with North County Corridor and the city's desire to preserve the access points to this new limited access expressway, which in this vicinity will pretty much follow the existing alignment of Clarabelle Road. So, and I'll go into this just a little bit more. If we look at this land area, option one, made up of those two areas I've just indicated on the map in yellow, we end up with about 667 acres gross, of which there's about 396 acres net buildable within those two identified areas. So basically, in my opinion, we're adding, we're suggesting if we expanded this sphere of influence to include the areas defined by option one, we're asking LAFCO to add another 396 buildable acres to our city. And I think that's reasonable in light of what some of the other cities have done with their sphere of influence and certainly in light of the capabilities of the public services for Riverbank as it stands right now. And I'm suggesting that this area be within the 10-year or primary growth area because certainly with Crossroads West, the intent is to annex that property once it's gone through all the proper review, including environmental and public hearings that'll follow that. Option 1A was a discussion potentially to expand the sphere of influence all the way to Coffey, so including lands beyond Crossroads West. And again, according to the general plan, the adopted general plan for the City of Riverbank, these are the types of land uses that are permissible under the adopted general plan and would result in about another 300 net acres added to the sphere of influence. If the council chooses to move in this direction, I believe that that area that I've indicated as option 1A should really be an area of 10 to 30-year growth horizon. So in other words, it's more long-term, but certainly of interest to the city as it relates to what land uses might be allowed within that area. North County Corridor, we've had a lot of discussions. The alignment hasn't been set. Environmental documents, we're told, are going to be released in October of this year. We'll have more opportunity to comment on that particular project, but most importantly, what impacts the North County Corridor would have on circulation on the east side of Riverbank and some of the alignments that we've seen could have a significant impact. Currently, we're told that Eleanor would act as a rural interchange with the North County Corridor. And that means that the only access point we would have in this vicinity would be at Claus and Clarabelle, which would be an ad-grade intersection. So we're also told that if the city can move forward with a planning effort to Eleanor, that as part of that North County Corridor, Stanislaus County would consider an urban interchange at Eleanor, which would allow us to access the North County Corridor at Claus as well as Eleanor as part of the funded North County Corridor project, when and if it ever happens. SOI expansion, option 1B, would include lands beyond Eleanor. Lands beyond Eleanor, I'm thinking could be part of the 10 to 30-year plan. Again, not an immediate annexation, but something in the future the city may want to consider. This area includes about 260 acres gross, but under our calculations, about 248 acres net buildable. So kind of a brief recap here. A lot of numbers I'm throwing out, but SOI, the sphere of influence, has not been changed since 1997. Current SOI is about 708 acres, of which we believe is 363 acres of net buildable. Option 1 would be to add an additional 667 acres or a total of 1,376. Option 1A and 1B is defined, and then option 1 and 1B is also defined. So this would be a combination of all of the above. So if we went for the entire area, option 1, option 1A, 1B, this would be the total. So total net buildable acres is about 1,300 acres. So based on our meeting with Stanislaus County LAFCO in July of this year, LAFCO has outlined the steps. We have to conduct a public hearing. We have to adopt a resolution. Staff would need to send out agency referrals, which is what the city manager talked about, about a number of agencies have to be involved in the process. We would need to update the municipal service review. Whoops, excuse me. We would have to go to Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors and get them to act on a resolution stating that they believe that the SOI sphere of influence for Riverbank as we have presented is both logical and orderly. And then, as I've described, the City Council would need to take action approving the revised MSR, the proposed SOI boundary, and seek way action to support that. And then, of course, develop a series of agricultural strategies, which we've got some already in our general plan, which I've also included in my staff report. And then ultimately, under six, staff would present an application to LAFCO for expansion of sphere of influence. And then we would continue to work with LAFCO to finally adopt the expanded sphere of influence. So as I stated, these are the existing agricultural policies that we have in our general plan. As we've seen with the City of Oakdale and City of Modesto and other cities, there are an array of agricultural mitigation opportunities that we have. In my opinion, we've got some very strong policy and goal language in our general plan to preserve and protect agriculture, and that will be part of our presentation to Stanislaus County LAFCO as we proceed through this process. So it's a public hearing tonight. Council can obviously do whatever you feel is appropriate. We have a resolution in front of you tonight. There is, this is a public hearing. We did receive a petition. I believe it's part of your application packages that the city clerk has forwarded off to you. It's signed by, I think, four or five different property owners specifically around the Eleanor Road area. They're very concerned about annexation to the city and quite frankly, concerned about losing irrigation rights associated with what they have with Oakdale Irrigation District. I can say that this sphere of influence action does not affect irrigation rights, however annexation would. And I think that that's something that the city staff can work with the property owners in OID to, if and when it's appropriate to annex these properties, to make sure that they maintain either irrigation rights until the time of development. Because we've seen that with east Riverbank development. We've had properties annexed and they haven't been developed. And that was part of the, you know, the building boom that we had through '05, '06. And those properties now, because of lack of irrigation water, have gone fallow. So that is an issue. It's a concern. It's certainly something that we can work through. But suffice it to say, this sphere of influence action does not annex territory. It talks about what areas the city might want to provide services for in the future in a sound, reasonable, and logical manner. These areas that we're showing within these exhibits, let me go back here a moment. So this is option 1. Option 1, these two property or two areas, Crossroads West, industrial to Eleanor, are both within the adopted Riverbank general plan, as well as, excuse me, as well as these two other option areas, option 1A and option 1B. Let me go back. I blew it here. Option 1A and option 1B. So we're still within the confines of our general plan, which actually goes, you know, much beyond these areas. So it's actually up to you.
Public hearing. I have a question on option 1B. When we go east of Eleanor, does that?
1B.
Go east of Eleanor. Does that conflict with our agreement with the buffer between Oakdale and Riverbank?
That's a very good point. It does not. The area that's part of that buffer is actually defined as lands that are north of Patterson Road, easterly of Eleanor, and north of Mesa to the highway. And those are defined by exhibit that are now part of about a 12-year agreement. Would you like me to send this to one of those exhibits as opposed to another? One of the maps? One would be more helpful.
Go to option 1.
Option 1 would be most helpful. Let me do that. Okay?
This is a public hearing.
This is very early. I may remember this from Riverbank. This is very early on the matter that you are planning on things that you're not even going to be here anymore as officials. But it's very easy for you to go with other matters as well and be willy-nilly. I want to define willy-nilly for you. You have decided what to do ahead of time in advance, and then you put it out to the public to decide, to, excuse me, to hear their opinion. But you're not going to hear any welcome to your opinions that you get. It's useless because it was already talked about and you had the condition. That's what willy-nilly is. It's useless to ask the public to come over and comment. It's useless to the ones that are watching. About this matter, sir, about this matter, that is pretty much the same with all matters that have been discussed. If you have already your mind made up, yes, come out and tell us what you're going to do rather than, we want your opinion. You don't take into consideration our opinion. It's useless. That's what I'm saying. You're not even going to be here by that time that this gets started. I'll tell you one point I just picked up. Mesa Verde School, does it sound familiar? Doesn't have sidewalks. Make them right now for those students that are right now, not when they are 18, 19 years old and went to Riverbank High School.
Right now, because we don't own it.
But I'm saying, why do you put a school on old muddy streets when the rain comes? Pray for rain, everybody, please. Pray for rain. We need it. And it's coming. Okay? But I'm saying that part. It's ugly the way that they plan things and they don't stay to see the results. They don't come and live there. See? Your children are not going to Mesa Verde School early. No. They're going to better schools with beautiful sidewalks, with beautiful sports arenas and all of that stuff. But you don't have a little bit attached to your heart and have compassion for those children and for those parents and for those relatives and for those caregivers that have to suffer through that. Summer or winter, they're still the same ugly place in there. That's not nice. And now they are planning to put, you have Mesa Verde there? That's where the school is near. It's going to be worse than a ghetto. I'm sorry to say that.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hold the mic down to you.
Oh, thank you. Mayor O'Brien, City Council members. I too put in an objection for the option I thought was option B for Eleanor Road. I live, I'm Mary L. Lee, and I live at 4718 Patterson Road, connected to Eleanor Road. And anyway, I put in an objection for that, and I'd like to read the extra objection that I have, if that's okay. My concern with the different options about the sphere of influence, that it is being centered to Eleanor Road. A statement that was said, expanding the sphere of influence, does not annex the properties immediately. The sphere of influence acts as a tool to identify the selected areas for consideration of future services based on realistic growth projection. But the concern and fears being, if any added development would occur or change on any property that was placed in the sphere of influence, the city has the option to annex the properties into the City of Riverbank. And with this option B and other options, as was presented to the council, the property owners in these areas that have agricultural land and ranchettes would no longer be able to have their livestocks, fruit trees, and et cetera. Because once we are annexed in the City of Riverbank, this would affect all of our livelihoods. We would be required from OID to detach from OID water and paying for city water on large acreage cannot benefit us landowners. And most of us there on Patterson Road, from Snidiger to Eleanor, most of us have five and six acres. And I think beyond is a little bit more. I'm not sure of exactly how much, but I know that most of us have five and six acres. So with that, I know what happened on Snidiger. When Snidiger Road was incorporated into the city, down below, there is five acres and it's bare. They have no water. They plow it all the time and keep it maintained, but there's no water on Snidiger Road. So that's how I feel about this project. All of us people who have larger land, I don't know what we would do if we were incorporated because we've worked for years to live in the country, not in the city. So anyway, I thank you very much. I still object because of that. My five acres I don't want in the city because I have no intentions of selling or doing any other than what I'm doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you, Mr. Anderson, for taking my complaint.
You got it. Please, no more public comment? I close the public hearing and bring it back. One of the inland use, before we incorporate, there is a plan. People have agreed to the plan. Landowners usually bring forth with a developer if they want to develop. If they don't want to develop, they don't and they're not incorporated. I know along Snidiger and along that area, they had agreed to a developer if they want I know along Snidiger and along that area, they had agreed to a development, but it went bust. So don't agree to it, and you won't lose OID, and you won't be incorporated. The only thing we want to do, at least from my standpoint, along the Eleanor corridor is where the North County corridor crosses Eleanor. That's the biggest concern that we have for circulation. Can you go through circulation? To where the North County corridor crosses Eleanor. Without that, the east side is bottled up and have to go all the way through town to get to the North County corridor. We don't want to have that happen. We won't want to cut you off and use 108, which will no longer be 108, and it won't be maintained by Caltrans, to the specifications a lot of people are criticized tonight. But Eleanor, there's two areas where it can happen. At the corner of Eleanor and Clarabelle, it'd be extremely important to be incorporated, or where it would cross a little bit more east. If it's not incorporated, you'll have this long up-and-over ramp. That's, that would be the extent. You wouldn't have access unless you went down to Claus, or if you're on the other side, you have to go down to Oakdale Road, past Clarabelle. That, to me, is extremely important for the city's movement. And that's the movement, too, of a lot of the goods and services that we expect to be coming out of the Army ammo plant. The general plan was adopted, written in 2007 and adopted in 2009, which includes Eleanor to McHenry. That is, to me, an extremely large amount. When Crossroads was first presented to Lafco in the late 80s and early 90s, Mr. Neal, who is not here tonight, was on Lafco. And the original one was to go to Coffee Road, and build from Coffee Road to the river. That's a lot of acreage. Okay? They should have incorporated it then, but I'm glad they didn't. We're not looking to plan 30, 40, 50 years out. A lot of the plans, which we're looking at for incorporation, is from now to 10 years down the road. And maybe some of us won't be here, but I intend to see it through. Okay, comments or questions of staff? John, thank you for the information. And thank you for the public comments and the petition, or I guess it was a petition. Thank you. We'll keep discussing if we go forward or if we don't. But I don't want to have anyone lose their farm or farm or ranchette. I'm looking to get one myself. I may be a neighbor.
I'd like to comment on Mr. Anderson's comments about some of our sphere of influence would be developed, maybe in the next 10 years. But looking further ahead, a lot of it, if we took the whole plan that was proposed here tonight, wouldn't be taken for possibly 30 years. And we are in a growth cycle. And if you look at Modesto, because I grew up in this area, and once upon a time, I can remember driving all the way down Scenic and not hitting anything until we got to Scenic Boulevard. It was all country. Modesto will take advantage, when they get the opportunities, to do certain things with their sphere of influence, or at least I feel so, because I've watched them. And that's why I particularly would rather see us go all the way to Coffee Road, because at least we can benefit from that. And Modesto might decide to come all the way over. Nobody knows that for sure, but they're councils of the future. So we have to look at this as not immediately doing something, but protecting us from the other entities around us that may decide to do something if we don't do it.
I want to make an additional comment. What was very telling to me, once I went to the Board of Supervisors, was on the Clarabelle widening project. At one point, where the Tulip Farm is, they cut off access from the Tulip Farm to Clarabelle. And when I objected, the telling question came from Supervisor DiMartini. Is it in your sphere of influence? No, it's not. Then why the hell do you care? That was his comment to me. I believe that's where his words. So I cared, because I knew where the future development is going to happen. And it was more immediate than we could let on to believe. So that's why these things are important, especially when we can control where we're going. So sphere of influences are important. That is to protect what we believe are future growth. Annexation is a different process. I mean, it's a continuation process, and does not necessarily follow. But it does, it will affect the city of Riverbank if we do not increase our sphere of influence. The added protection for going to option 1B, which would be Eleanor on the east side, is that when development does happen, we could control both sides of the street and not have what you currently have at Oakdale Road, where you have development on one side, non-development on the other, and yet you have to plan for stormwater, which is going to be another big issue. But we still have to plan for the stormwater, the runoff, the drainage, and the potential contamination of our stormwater coming from another area. So that's why those options are out there. And I don't know if we will, what options we're going to take. I have no preconceived notion. But I do know that we need to protect the city if we want to go to the growth areas that we have initially anticipated.
I have a couple of things I'd like to say. Actually, kind of a lot. I hope I can put them in order that makes sense tonight. Couple of things are going through my mind, and a couple of things that I hear that I really feel like we need some clarification. First off, what's on the table tonight is a request to put in an application. Nowhere in any reading that I read said annexation whatsoever. So unless I read something wrong, tonight, all we're looking at is starting this process. And I think even the petition that our neighbor down the way said, she even got that point, too. So I think I want to kind of nail that one home and send it down to, for everyone to really hear, is that tonight, what's on the table for us to make any decisions is to start the process of an application. Okay? So I think that's the first important part, point I'd like to make tonight. And two, it's kind of ironic that if we don't do some of this sphere of influence, if we don't protect our boundaries, we will continue to have more problems with schools that are out there on Mesa Verde. And I take great offense to that, because I have friends and family that actually attend that school. So I take great offense to some comments I heard tonight. And to think that the council sitting up here is making decisions that we won't even be around for, that's kind of why you guys elected us, so that we could set policies so that we have something in place for future generations. And I don't think anybody up here would sit here and say that, oh, yeah, I'm just going to do this because willy-nilly, you know, I'm not even going to be around, I don't care for 10 years. You've heard me state several occasions that it is very important that the policy that we set is something that we look for in the future. And so I'm pretty fired up about that tonight. So those are a couple of things there. The other part I kind of want to talk about is that this is a public process. And we would be breaking the law if any one of us talked about this before we came here tonight. That's part of the Brown Act. So if you think that we have set our minds and made up our minds completely of what we're doing, then you're gravely mistaking, and we would be breaking laws. This is an open, public process, complete transparency, and we want the public to know and have their input. So if you don't think what you say matters or we're hearing, it really does. And we sit here and take everything you send our way. We read all this stuff. We come up here to make informed decisions, because you voted for us and elected us to make decisions that are going to be long-lasting for our town. So those are just a couple of things that I wanted to put out there.
And there are several options. So take a look at if you want no options, say no option. I don't know if we're going to go all the way to Coffee. Do we want to go to Coffee? Do we want to go to McHenry? All of those are the options that are out there. They're in our, before we can do an MSR, they have to be in our general planning area. And these are in our general planning area. There's a lot of steps. And the step was initially taken in 1989, and then again reaffirmed in 2007 with adoption of 2009 for the general plan. So that's already established. This is the next step. Okay? And how rapidly we want to bring things into our sphere of influence is where we would like to start developing. Or not developing, but at least have protection over it. So that's where we're going, coming from. And if we do nothing, then the North County corridor will happen without our input. The North County corridor will happen without our, you know, access in certain areas. So it's all of those things to consider. And the consideration, if we do nothing, well, how will that affect the city in 10, 15 years if the industrial park decides to want to expand? You know, where would that traffic go? And how would that commerce be exported?
I also heard, I want to throw one more thing in there. I also heard the term the last few weeks of land grabbers, and I kind of took offense to that also. And just as the mayor was stating, all that we're talking about already is already in our general plan. We just don't have the sphere of influence in place. And I think it's really important for our protection of our city and protection of our farmland that's out there, protection of our city, to have the sphere of influence in place. And I think people are misunderstanding the process, that if we don't have these in place, we have our hands tied as far as future development. It could be taken out of our control here, out of your control. So it's really important to get these things in place. And I think people are misunderstanding that point. And I'd like to say that. And I think I'm done with my comments for tonight. Pass it on to my other council members.
I just think it's very important for us to start planning. If we don't plan, as you've heard everyone else say, we don't have any options. We do have to expand. Where would we go? I mean, we have to have a plan in place. So if there isn't one in this process tonight, as you've heard, it's just to start the application, and that's what we have to do. And for the North County corridor, I've said time and time again that if we don't have a say-so in the North County corridor, it affects everybody, no matter where you live, whether you're on the east side or the west side of it. The North County corridor is coming, and we have to be prepared and to have some type of control of what we need to do for the future. Thank you.
I would just add, I agree with all the comments that have been made. We have to be proactive. We have to protect our interests. And you have an educated council up here. You have a council that reads the reports. You have a council that does its homework. You have a council that lives in this community, that cares about this community, and who cares about the future of this community, our children and our grandchildren. And yes, you know, we're making decisions that may affect people down the road, but far better to be proactive and make, you know, the correct decisions now, and to protect our interests. So that's all I have.
So at this point, we have a resolution that we are to adopt. But do we have, we don't select any of the options, correct? Or what is our?
We do have an Exhibit A.
Right. I see the Exhibit A. I have it in front of me.
That includes, I believe, both options A and B.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. So it is the recommendation of the staff to adopt a resolution this evening at a minimum to include option 1. And would ask you to seriously consider including both option 1A and 1B to proceed with the process, which is complicated and lengthy. And so as long as we're going through it, we might as well incorporate areas that are, again, as was stated by the council, already within our general planning area. Some of those areas would be long-term, others shorter term.
So the MSR does not necessarily mean that we will expand the SLI out to the, what we've had Lafco do?
I'll let Mr. Anderson address that.
Let's make this clear. You know, the MSR, Municipal Service Review Update Process, is a fairly lengthy process. The document that Stanislaus County Lafco gave us was like the Reader's Digest version of what a real MSR is supposed to look like. And so there's a lot of work and thought that goes into that documentation to demonstrate that services are available now and in the future to provide capacity for these areas that we've indicated for short-term growth and long-term growth. So it's important for us as staffers to understand directly from you as a council as to where you feel we need these boundaries to be for study purposes. So when we get into the MSR, that MSR document will use those boundaries and then go through the exercise of demonstrating capacities to serve. Because the reality is, we take the boundaries, we take the updated MSR, we bring it back to you for consideration before we do anything. And then assuming you agree with conclusions and determinations that are made that Municipal Service Review, then and only then do we make official application to Lafco with the boundaries and the statements that are made within that Municipal Service Review.
So put up the options that you want us to consider.
So again, option 1 is the areas that I've defined here. And then this is the table, the area of net acreage that we're talking about. Gross at 667, net at 396. Option 1A, which is what we've talked about, which would be to go to Coffee, but not beyond Coffee Road. So it would include option 1, which is Crossroads West, and then go beyond that to Coffee Road, north of Clarabelle, and then south of Patterson Road. And this is the land use statistics that would match up against that proposal. North County corridor, and then option 1B, which would go beyond Eleanor to our general plan limits, south of Patterson, to Clarabelle Road. And this would be the statistics that would back that up, 260 gross acres and 248 acres net buildable, all of which are in your staff report tonight.
And then, John, we're making a resolution, say, if we go with all three areas that you just defined, that our resolution would mean that the MSRs are going to take place to establish whether this is something we potentially can do.
Correct. So you're telling, you're giving staff clear direction that when, what you're expecting us to analyze under the Municipal Service Review are all three of these areas? Or not, depending on what your discussion leads you to tonight?
That is your Exhibit A.
That is my Exhibit A. That is my Exhibit A. With one distinction, and I think I made it clear in the staff report in my presentation, but these areas I've illustrated as 1B and 1A, I really believe those aren't, those are more long-term. So I'm really thinking, yeah, we're going to study them, but it's really a longer-term development opportunity from, let's say, 10 to 30 years. And it may actually be much longer than that. But, you know, so from a protection standpoint, from an agency referral standpoint, gives us the ability to tell Stanislaus County Supervisor Jim DiMartini and/or others that, yes, it's in our sphere of influence, and yes, we do care about the land use entitlements that you may be considering within our jurisdiction.
Right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve options 1A, 1B, and option 1, as was discussed, so that we can start the resolution with the MSRs for the future.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to apply for application to MSR, for an MSR that will cover the area in our general plan, boundaries from the east side of Eleanor up to the east side of Coffee Road, from Clarabelle to 108.
You put that one up on the screen, please. I want to make sure I know which one it is.
Option 1?
1, that has 1A and 1B in it.
This is 1B.
That's B. A, I want to see the whole enchilada.
I don't have an exhibit that has all of them collectively.
It's right here.
That one with the...
It's in his Exhibit A.
I know. I got that one. I kind of wanted it for...
It's actually in the resolution. Sorry.
Right. I kind of said that because I didn't think that they could see it out there. I know we've got...
I know we've got it here on ours.
Again, I, I broke it down the way that I saw that it was, should be presented.
This one with the A and the B.
And quite frankly, I wasn't sure what the council was going to do. So I presented it this way and not in combination, because I didn't know which way we were going.
Thank you.
Clarification.
So we have a, a motion to accept Option 1, 1A, 1B, as is laid out in Exhibit A. And did we have a second? And a second?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5-3, received presentation on the draft City of Riverbank Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan Update, and receive comments and questions from the City Council and the public.
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council. On this evening, we are presenting an overview of the report on the Americans with Disabilities Act evaluation. Kathleen Kleek will introduce this item, as well as the consultants who assisted the city in this process. This, this evening are our proposals that would open up a public comment period that would extend 30 days. So in addition to seeing the review this evening, the council, as well as members of the public, will be have, have an opportunity to comment further on it, because it is quite an intense document. Kathleen?
Thank you, Jill. Good evening, mayors and members of the City Council. Tonight, well, actually, September of last year, you authorized MIG to do a comprehensive ADA Transition Plan Update for the City of Riverbank. The plan includes a comprehensive survey of all the city's parks, recreation, and building facilities. It identifies physical obstacles limiting accessibility to city-owned facilities. The plan also includes an assessment of the city's curb ramps and sidewalks. So it's very detailed. Staff is very excited to have this. It'll be handy when we do projects in the future. And it'll also help us to identify and plan out in our capital improvement plan to make sure that these improvements get taken care of for our residents. The data acquired has been used to develop the city's ADA and self-evaluation transition plan. So tonight, I would like to introduce to you Tim Gilbert and Ashley Tomberlin from MIG. They're going to give you a brief overview of the plan. And like this city manager had stated, this is a draft plan. And it'll be available for your comments, as well as the public's comments for 30 days. I will have full documents at both City Hall South and City Hall North, as well as it will be on our website. So it should be pretty accessible for anyone who wants to look at it. So with that, I will give you Tim and Ashley.
Thank you, Kathleen. And Mayor and members of council, it's been a pleasure working with your staff and your community on the preparation of this plan. You may know that this is the 25th year anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which has been celebrated by many, and of course, lots of work to be done. But still, this is a great year for everyone. The ADA is a comprehensive civil rights act. We think of it oftentimes as a building requirements, building codes. But in fact, it is a civil rights act. And it comprises aspects that cover all, everyone in the United States, from employment for employers and employees, to public, state and local government services, to telecommunications, to places of public accommodation, which are the private sectors, and the Congress and Senate. So I think this is a comprehensive act that really covers everything. But I think it's important to recognize that for public agencies, it focuses on the programs, services, and activities that are provided by the city or by public agencies. Again, an important aspect. And you'll see how the provision of services and programs can be provided in a number of different ways. The required document, which is a self-evaluation and transition plan, required of every public agency in the United States, is really comprised of two portions. One is a self-evaluation of policies and programs. Basically requires us to look at the ways people are provided services from the city. And also a transition plan, which details any physical changes that may have, have to happen to facilities or parks in order to provide those services. So our document comprises both of those sections. The ADA, again, was passed in 1990. Next year, the, they established a set of facility requirements. And basically, that is the building code-type part of the civil rights law. Those standards were updated in 2004, and more recently in 2010, where they added the first-time recreation facilities, like sports fields, swimming pools, and other recreation elements that had never been covered in the ADA before, or in the California Building Code. And now, in 2015, the City of Riverbank has a draft self-evaluation and transition plan update that is available for your review and for the review of the community. So we're very proud of the work that your staff has done in order to complete this. And as Kathleen mentioned, it's a prodigious document. The appendix is a lot thicker than the actual document here, and it contains a comprehensive review of all your facilities. So that is going to be a very useful tool for city staff. The administrative draft was reviewed by staff in April. We did have a kickoff public meeting in March of 2015. The plan, as Kathleen mentioned, will be posted online and also hard copy available in city offices. So members of the public can review it in detail, because it is a thick document. But we are very proud of being able to present this to the public. And we'll bring it back to you again after that review period for any changes that might be suggested or required based on your or the public's comments. Well, as I mentioned, the self-evaluation portion of this document covers policies, standard operating procedures, and really the way, the way staff provides services to members of the public. And this could be the way a person who has a visual disability, or is blind, or deaf, or hard of hearing receives information at a public meeting, at a counter, over the telephone. So this is not really just about wheelchair users or people with mobility disabilities. This is all manner of disabilities. And certainly, people with disabilities represent a very wide spectrum of, of ability. And so I think that's important to recognize. It covers areas like customer service, asking staff to modify standard operating procedures, where perhaps somebody might need to sign a document. But if one cannot sign the document, there needs to be an accommodation for that individual so that they can have that document accepted. In public meetings, it's important that people with hearing disabilities or other disabilities are able to communicate. That might be through an American Sign Language interpreter that you provide for an individual with a disability so they can participate in your, in your, in your city council meeting or any public meetings. Or if documents are provided by the city, and they are, in written format, that those might be available in large print, in Braille, or in electronic formats, so a member of the public could use their computer to synthesize the speech of that document. So there's lots of technology now available for people with disabilities to participate in civic life, get the information that is provided to people who have, you know, visual acuity. So these are, all these elements are detailed in the self-evaluation portion of the document. Now, in order to provide services to people with disabilities, the city has several options. You may make alterations to a facility that may be needed in order to provide access at that location. You may also relocate the activity provided in that facility to another, to another location so that, that program can, can be accessible. So relocating an activity is an acceptable solution for providing access. This is for existing buildings and programs, but this would not work for new construction or alterations. When you are going to build a building, you are not allowed to say, well, we have an accessible swimming pool, so we're not going to build an accessible swimming pool. But you can, with existing facilities, relocate those activities. You can also provide auxiliary aids or services. And those would be things like, like assistive listening devices to help a person who's hard of hearing hear the proceedings at a public meeting, or a Braille document, or a large print. So those are some of the options that you have to make programs accessible to members of the public. Well, part of the, part of the document also includes a comprehensive survey of your city facilities, every park and public building where programs are provided. We did not go into staff-only areas or maintenance areas. That's covered under Title 1 of the Americans with Disabilities. This is a Title 2 document that covers access to members of the public, to programs and services. So any city facility, whether it be a park or a public building, where the public was expected to enter, a comprehensive survey of those buildings was completed. And that survey includes identification of a barrier, a barrier removal solution, and planning level cost estimates for each one of those elements. Those are all included in the appendices of the document. Some of the common barriers that we found in city facilities. And by the way, we found, and we've done really dozens, hundreds of these evaluations, including Lathrop, Selma, Stockton, Fresno, Reedley, Madera, many Central Valley cities, and many other, you know, cities in California and elsewhere. We really are here to report that we felt that your newer facilities are in great shape. We saw lots of examples of accessible work that's been done, including in the public right-of-way and, and city facilities and parks. So while we did find barriers, of course, we found barriers, because older facilities were not built oftentimes in compliance with this regulation. We found many things that were in compliance. So just wanted to report that, because it does sound like a bag news report here. In fact, it is not. It simply lays out what the issues are and how to move forward with a strategic plan to make the city more accessible. But some of the things are cross slopes on walks and sidewalks, doors that might be hard to open or fast to close, restrooms where dispensers might be a bit too high, drinking fountains that now require two drinking fountains, one wheelchair-accessible fountain, and one higher for people who can't really bend over to use that accessible fountain. And of course, recreation facilities, where we now have new standards. So many of the facilities that we have built, like dugouts and softball fields, which now require a path of travel to enter the field of play, which had never been a, a standard before, but is now a standard. So we identified all of those things, and those are now all contained in the report. We categorized all of those reports based on criteria that we established, that have been established by the ADA. And also, we worked with staff to do this. We, in our reports, have identified whether that is a building entrance or a park facility entrance, an area that improves access to the program use area, or amenities like drinking fountains, vending machines, or telephones, public telephones, and then areas that are not required to be modified, because we have a reasonable location nearby where that service can be provided. That could literally be a softball diamond where you do have access, as opposed to one next door that does not have access. So the obligation is to provide access to the programs when viewed in their entirety. So there is an option to not make the physical changes to a facility, but rather to identify an option, another, you know, nearby location where that service can be provided. And there are also some historical elements that are subject to preservation laws, where the element is not subject to ADA in its full, in its full sense. So that was a categorization of barriers. We also looked in the public right-of-way. We evaluated every street, every curb ramp in the City of Riverbank. We did a very comprehensive review of the sidewalks and, and curb ramps around city facilities. That's a number-one priority established by the ADA. But we also did a rapid assessment, meaning a, a, a evaluation, but not that kind of detailed square foot by square foot evaluation of all 110 miles of public sidewalks in the City of Riverbank, and over 200 curb ramps. So that was, that was done in the public right-of-way. We also evaluated, or we worked with staff to establish some strategic planning components for removing barriers. We looked at facilities at the level of public use of those facilities, whether facilities were, had unique programs or services associated with them, geographic distribution, and if any identified complaints had been received at those facilities. So that helped create a strategic plan, laying out a schedule of barrier removal, which is an important component in a compliant ADA transition plan. Well, that resulted in a table of facility improvements. These are target dates here. Those are years 1 through 3, 4 through 6, or 7 through 10, using the criteria that we established with, with city staff. And the, the schedule, while it is rational and established based on criteria, of course, it is subject to flexibility and change. If you receive funds to modify a facility, every modification of facilities these days does have a accessibility component. That's just the way building alterations and construction works. So that would, of course, likely change the schedule of barrier removal. But this is requirement of the ADA to have an established target schedule for the removal of barriers. And, and you now have that for buildings, for park facilities, and for public right-of-way. The self-evaluation and transition plan is, as Kathleen said, a valuable tool for staff when modifications are being anticipated at a public facility. This is a comprehensive list of accessibility issues that are currently observed in those facilities. And those can assist designers and contractors with solving problems that really go to the heart of accessibility and code compliance and risk management. So this is an important element in, in city work and making sure that you have these identified. The plan identifies those barriers. The plan also, because it included a comprehensive survey of staff on how programs are provided to members of the public, served as a very effective planning or a training tool for city staff. Staff answered a 14-page questionnaire about how services are provided to people who are deaf, who are blind, who have mobility impairments, who may have learning disabilities. So this was kind of an eye-opening experience. And the document includes a toolkit, basically, a list of resources for city staff to help solve problems. Our contract also includes a staff training component. So we will be coming back to city staff and providing one-on-one staff training for customer service for your city staff. So talking a little bit fast here, it's a comprehensive plan. But I wanted to make sure you had a chance to see the work that, that staff and we have established. My colleague, Ashley Tomberlin, has been key in this work. So we're here to answer any questions or hear anything from you or members of the public regarding the plan. So thank you.
I just want to say this is a very comprehensive plan. Thank you for all the work. And thank you, staff, for all the work that you did to get this completed. I just have one question. For future development, there are certain requirements for them to implement ADA standards or requirements. So who monitors that? Our staff, or they already know as far as the development, developer, what needs to happen?
Yes, your staff monitors new development, whether it's by city project or by private development through the building permit process. They monitor it through the California Building Code. Your building inspectors are obligated to follow the California Building Code, which has been synced with the Americans with Disabilities Act architectural standards. There had been some changes, some differences between those standards. California has always had a quite rigorous building code standard around accessibility. And your building officials are very aware and competent. We've been working with staff, and they've been reviewing our plans. We've been reviewing their plans. And, you know, I'm confident that they're doing a good job for you.
Okay, thank you. My comments that I'm...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. My comments that I penciled in as going through all this stuff was, wow. It was, it was a lot of stuff, very detailed. And I cannot imagine the amount of time and effort that it took for everyone to get this thing put together in reading all the details about inches of how high the picnic table needs to be and offset. And, and I work with folks on a daily basis that have disabilities. And so I can be one that appreciates those needs that are out there. appreciates those needs that are out there. And in traveling through Europe last summer, one of my comments in using public transportation was, they are not quite set up as well as we are. I know we have a long, long way to go as far as accessibility, but it was very apparent last summer when traveling, and I just wanted to say thanks to everybody that put that document together. It was a lot of work and very detailed, so thank you.
My question is a concern that I have that I've related to our city manager a couple of times. What about our unimproved properties? I'm specifically thinking about along the river, River Cove. We have a lot of access. We're not condoning it. It's just the city owns the property. People are going over the banks to access the river. Where do we stand? And maybe Tom could comment on that also because it's not really a park, but we own the land and the public's using it. Do we have to do something with that land?
Not according to the Americans with Disabilities Act. That really only deals with developed properties, so.
Good question.
Your point of 25 years with ADA, and there's still a lot of work that you've identified. Some of it's quite obvious, especially along Roselle Avenue. There are other areas along Patterson Road where you have a telephone pole or a power pole right in the middle of the sidewalk, and oh, you can't traverse or you can't go along the sidewalk. So there's a lot of work that we have to do, but 25 years, any small effort is okay, but we have a lot of improvements. In the parks, I know you identified access. There's a trend now in having adaptive equipment to where a child with disabilities and a child without disability can play alongside each other, which has not been addressed formally by law, but I believe it will be, and that's something that we should consider, the future trends, which I would like to see as you're developing it, future trends in ADA improvements. Okay, right now I have to open it up for public comment. This is a public hearing, public comments. We'll also have public comment for 30 days at City Hall South and North, and we'll also have public comments you can provide through our website. So please take a look at the plan, make comments, ask questions, and then we'll evaluate it after the 30-day public comment period. I see no public comment. I will close the public comment, bring it back. And so we've received the report and whatever public comments and comments from the council, and we'll be back in 30 days for consideration and/or approval. Correct? Do I need a motion of anything? I didn't think so. Okay, thank you very much. Do you have any comments for us?
The process is 30-day process for comments. So depending on what we receive back from council and the residents, we'll give those comments at the end of the 30-day period. We'll give those back to MIG for them to update, and then we'll come back to council with that report.
I did not expect it to be 30 days and one second, no.
I just wanted to make it clear to the public. I knew you knew that, Mayor, but I just want to make sure everyone else did.
I know the speed of government is really fast. I poke my eye out on that one. Thank you very much. New business, item 6.1, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California to adopt emergency water restrictions in accordance with Section 6.5 of the Urban Water Master Plan.
Mayor, members of the City Council, while our residents have done a great job in conserving water and have implemented water conservation measures for many, many years, this significant drought that is affecting our state has prompted the governor, of course, to issue an executive order. And that executive order and the subsequent actions of the State Water Quality Control Board has basically said that they are evaluating water usage since 2013. Unfortunately, the city has not been meeting the goals established. So while we have been reducing our water consumption roughly 20%, give or take, the goal is 32%. And so as a result of that, we are recommending some changes to our outdoor watering ordinance consistent with the city's urban water master plan. Mr. Michael Riddell, who has been our point person on all matters related to the water and the drought, is here this evening to provide additional information and comment a brief overview of what the proposal is before you this evening.
Thank you, Joe. Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. So in essence, first of all, one of the points that we would like to make to council and to the public is this is not an ordinance change. This is an emergency declaration that will run and have a sunset date with the governor's executive order on the mandated reduction. So we wanted to make that perfectly clear. What we're proposing to do in this emergency declaration that through our urban water management plan gives you the ability to do so is to take us to two-day-a-week. What we would propose to do, basically spelled out, was that we would change our watering hours from 7:00 p.m. to noon the following day, or to 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. No water allowed between 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. We would take it to two days a week, and those two days would be spelled out being that the odd-numbered street addresses shall only water on Mondays and Fridays. The even-numbered dwellings would water on Tuesdays and Saturdays. There would be no watering within the city on Wednesday, Thursday, or Sunday. Currently, we have a three-day-a-week program with the fourth day, meaning Sunday, everybody has the ability to water. So to restrict those through this emergency declaration to the two-day-a-week, we believe we will be able to meet the 32% mandate that was set by the executive order through the State Water Board. Now, as the city manager pointed out, we have been reducing. We've been running in the 20% range. I have taken a look at the state report that kind of shows everybody's actions in the city throughout the state, everybody, what they're doing. And as you can see, I've highlighted every city that hasn't met the reductions. So we're by no means the only one that hasn't done it. However, because it was a state mandate and because the State Water Board issued the restrictions, we did receive a notice of violation from the State Water Board on the month of July because we only had the 21%. We haven't received a notice of violation for the month of August, however, I believe we probably will. I have been in contact with the State Water Board for the notice of violation and what we will do to change that and try to meet that restriction. And one of the things that I have told them is that we would be proceeding to council to reduce the number of water days. So I stand before you tonight doing that as I told the State Water Board I would do so. So in essence, when we look at this, and I know that every time I've been before you, I've always kind of caveated our water situation as we do not have a water quality or quantity issue in the city of Riverbank. However, because of the state mandate declared by the governor, because everybody that lives in the state of California, probably everybody that lives in this nation knows that we are in our fifth year of drought and could possibly go to the sixth year, depending on who you listen to, although we could be looking for gully washers come this winter, too. I don't know. I'm hoping it's going to rain. I'm hoping it's going to rain rather steadily over a period of time. But we have been very proactive with this. We have been working with the public and with the citizens, and they have reacted to it in a positive way. As you all know, we put on staff to go through a water conservation coordinator that goes through the city and helps people try to meet the reductions that we're requesting. And to date, she has issued 662 citations. Starting June 10th last month, she issued 154 citations in a single month, so she has been very busy. We have most people that will get an initial citation and warning that will comply. However, we do have a small percentage that it takes a little bit longer to get them to understand. We are looking at, basically, if we go to the two-day-a-week, if you so elect to take us to two-day-a-weeks, we will run a public education campaign for a period of time to let people know that the restriction has been ratcheted down and will basically take everybody back to a zero stance, meaning that people that have already received citations or multiple citations will go back to zero. However, they will have to deal with the citations they currently have. So we just want to make sure that everybody gets a good understanding of what we're doing and what the requirement is and what the schedule is before we start going back into going back into and issuing any type of warnings or citations. So with that being said, as you can see within the staff report and the urban water management plan, you have the capabilities of doing this if there are certain criteria that are met. You basically have five things, and it's listed in the staff report. On the criteria that has to be met, and you have to meet three of the five. So basically, as a quick rundown is that under stage three, which we're going to look at, which is called severe, according to our urban water management plan, you have five things that have to exist. Below-average rainfall in the previous 36 to 48 months, well, we all know we meet that one. Number two would be prolonged periods of low water pressure. Well, we don't have that issue here. Number three would be 10% or more of the city wells out of service due to noncompliance or drop in groundwater levels. We don't have that issue here. Number four, irrigation allotments by local irrigations reduced by 35%. Actually, that number's probably quite higher. There are some that's reduced at least 50%. And number five, the extended warm weather patterns typical of summer, which we have had for the last several years. So we do meet three of that five criteria. That gives you the ability to go ahead and put these restrictions in place. So everybody knows, I think, in the state of California that we're in a drought. The governor in January 17, 2014, made his declaration and his executive order and then mandated that the State Water Board pull in the restrictions, and they came up with our reduction numbers, and they decided to say that the city of Riverbank needs to reduce by 32%. And that's our mark. And so far, we have not been able to meet it. I think with this, we will. With that, I will be willing to answer any questions you may have.
I had a question. What does the education plan look like?
We currently have a newsletter already in place that will go out. In that newsletter, it will basically give them the schedule, give them some water-saving tips and those kind of things. We have a hard card that will go out with water schedule, too. We will obviously have our conservation coordinator out and about and going door-to-door, talking to people, let them know that it's coming. We will post it on our website. I have been discussing with Kim, my administrative assistant, about putting big flashing red letters or something up there that says, here's the change, and then we'll give them the period of time to adjust to it.
What was the timeframe that we were going to keep our water coordinator? What was the months?
We hadn't really decided on a start-stop period for her. We were looking at the funding and that we were going to go through it. I think, Maricela, we were looking at, like, mid-October. Yeah, and so it basically depends on when it starts raining.
Okay.
I open it to the public for comment on the item 6.1 to further restrict the water. She won't take it.
I don't want it. What's the timeframe for when this goes into effect, when you send the notice out?
Michael, that's a good question.
Yes, it is a very good question. So what we're looking at here was running the public education campaign, and we figured probably two to three weeks after, if council decides to go ahead and do this, to get people either through the mailer that'll go out, through the website, through the contact with conservation coordinator and those type of people, and our staff, obviously, when they're out and about, will be doing the same thing, letting people know.
Michael, would it be safe to say it goes into effect immediately, but we would not be enforcing it until a period of probably 30 days for sake of...
Yeah, we want to give the city manager correct. It will go into effect if it's passed tonight immediately, but we won't start enforcing it for a period of time.
So since this is going to affect the city not getting enough money for their water because you won't let us water, does that mean you're going to up your surtax charge, drought surcharge thing?
No.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, could you please make the NOB public because it wasn't attached to the...
Yeah, and she is correct there. The NOB, the public can come view at my office anytime they want. I will make sure that the city clerk has it in hand tomorrow morning. But the notice of violation, in essence, basically is because we didn't meet that 32% reduction, which is states in my staff report.
Any further public comment? Bring it back to the council. For consideration of item 6.1, to impose a revised outdoor watering schedule to be implemented, additional outdoor watering restriction.
Make a motion that we approve item 6.1.
I second.
Motion to approve item 6.1, and a second.
Council members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, fiscal year 2014-15, year-end financial status report.
Yes, mayor members of the City Council, as the books for 2014-2015 have been closed out, we are prepared to provide you a year-end financial status report. Maricela Garcia, our director of finance, will be providing this report as always as our resident money expert. In addition to that, I would let the public know that we are planning to have a special meeting on the evening of Monday, October 12, to review overall budget trends and the forecast. This is something that was initiated last year in response to requests from you, Mayor O'Brien, and proved to be very valuable, so we are again scheduling that for consideration, just to be able to take into consideration long-term trends. So this evening, we'll be focusing on the year-end 14-15. Maricela?
Good evening, Mayor. Council members. So tonight, I do have for you the fiscal year 2014-15, year-end financial status report. These are unaudited figures, but I am happy to report that the auditors during their fieldwork last week did not recommend any changes. So when they issue their final report, these figures should be what's reflected in that final audit report. We'll be discussing mainly the general fund. The general fund is the city's discretionary fund. There's no legal restriction on how the city council can appropriate these funds towards any expenditures. Typical expenditures include general government, such as administration, finance, planning. Some of the larger ones, obviously, public safety and parks and recreation. The activities are general in nature and provide services to city as a whole, and the reason that they're paid through the general fund is that most of these services have little to no direct service charge to our customers or our residents and are considered allowable expenses under the general fund. So as of the end of the fiscal year, this is the status of our reserve. So on July 1, 2014, we started with a reserve of $819,200. During our budget discussions, the city council did agree to appropriate a portion of a beginning reserve to the legal settlement that we knew we would be facing with the Allen versus city of Riverbank case. So we appropriated approximately $335,000 towards that of the beginning reserve. So that was over and above the $819,000 that we began with in terms of operating. So that was over and above the $819,000 that we began with in terms of operating funds. For revenues received, we received $8.8 million in revenue, well above the $8.6 million that we had anticipated during our mid-year budget projection. Operating expenditures came at $8.7 million, which was above the $8.6 million in operating expenditures we had anticipated at mid-year. We did have approximately $287,000 that were part of the expenses for that legal settlement that we set aside the reserve for. There may be more in the future when it comes to that legal settlement because of the additional terms of that, but that would be the case if the property owner were looking to reconstruct their home. And so total expenses for the fiscal year were $9 million. So the ending reserve, as of June 30, 2015, ended with a healthy 10.2%, slightly above our required 10% reserve. But we did suffer a structural deficit where our revenues were less than our expenditures for the fiscal year. But as I mentioned, there had already been made the commitment of reserves towards a certain portion of those expenditures, particularly the legal settlement. Just looking at an overview of the revenues we received by category, as I mentioned, we did receive $8.8 million, which was above the $8.6 projected at the beginning of the fiscal year. And I'll go through a few of the highlights of some of those in a minute. Property taxes, we received 33% of our general fund revenues were in the form of property taxes this fiscal year, or this past fiscal year. Sales tax was about 31% of the total revenues we received. So those, as you'll see, those make up 60% of our revenue sources, and those are the two most volatile revenue sources that any city can have because they are highly dependent on what your economy does, and not only what your local economy does, but what your state and national economy does as well. So a few of these revenue highlights. Property tax came in at $2.9 million, well above the $2.86 or $2.87 that was projected during the mid-year budget. The county assessor's office continued its eight reductions that it had done in the prior fiscal years. So it's been reversing those, as well as property sales have increased quite a bit throughout the City of Riverbank, which have increased property values. And then there's a property transfer tax that we get to benefit from whenever a property changes hands or ownership. Sales tax for the fiscal year came in about $57,000 from what we had anticipated during the mid-year budget. The economy's slowly rebounding from our recession. Employment, unemployment figures are decreasing throughout all of the cities and in the county, and so that's leading to our consumers having, you know, a little bit more additional income available for purchases. Buying new homes means you buy new furniture oftentimes, and so we're seeing the benefits of that economy coming back. Permits and licenses, one of the reasons I wanted to highlight this one came in at 132% of what we had projected, and building permit revenue this past fiscal year really skyrocketed from the prior fiscal years where we were seeing much less than $100,000 coming in in building permit revenues. Our issuance of solar permits really increased. And then new construction, KB Homes, has really come in to benefit the city, not only in terms of revenue at this point in time through the building permits, but in the future, all of those property values going from vacant land to now homes being constructed on it will increase our property tax in the future. General fund expenditures for the fiscal year came in at $9 million, well over the 8.6 million that was anticipated. The biggest of those was the, was under legal services. Police services, and not just Tom's fee, but just legal services in general, so... Police services still makes up the most significant portion of our general fund expenditures at 44%. And I'm pretty sure that all of our residents will say that it is well worth the monies that we are spending with our contract through the sheriff's department. Parks and Recreation is also one of our larger expenses at 13% and Finance and Administration at 14%. So legal expenses, the technical budget was $217,000, but we know that there was a legal settlement that was approved during a closed session. And so our year-to-date actuals were $638,000. The legal settlement resulted in costs of $287,000. Some of that was in a direct cash settlement to the plaintiff. The balance was in the demolition of the property in question. And so that, that made up the $287,000. And as I mentioned, those were paid through the initial committed reserve that the city council had set aside for that.
I would like to add that while the initial discussions were, the initial settlement was approved in closed session, that was ultimately a public announcement in regards to that, consistent with the Brown Act, and that made available for public review. So I did want to clarify that that's a long-term process, but did ultimately end up in a public announcement.
Correct, and our auditors did take that into consideration because there is a budget versus expense report that goes into the annual audit, and so they do take all of our minutes and actions into consideration when, when looking at those. Otherwise, they would have flagged the variance and asked why, why the significant variance, but that was not flagged by them. Second category that came in, and I was only slightly over budget, but I did want to highlight, was our personnel expenses. Towards the end of the fiscal year, in May, we did approve the labor contract with the miscellaneous bargaining unit. And so that, that cost was added to the actual expenses that we incurred for the prior fiscal year. And so there was an actual budget appropriation since it was after the mid-year budget. Moving on to the sewer fund. As of the end of the fiscal year, this sewer fund had received about $2.2 million in revenues in comparison to the 2.1 that we had anticipated receiving. So that was a positive figure that we received. Operating expenses came in well below what we had anticipated. It only came in at 91% of the anticipated budget. And we did end with a reserve of 28% in the sewer fund. So that's been the first time I've seen it that close to 30% in quite some time. The revenues that we received from our sewer fund, our sewer service charges came in with the addition of new homes. Homes no longer being vacant, we saw a lot of turnover in homes, which generated some revenues. And then our industrial permit revenues, our local manufacturers that hold industrial permits have really been either ramping up or have just been, you know, generating a lot of merchandise to where their, their industrial permit revenue came in over budget. Expenditures for the fiscal year, we had a significant decrease in our utilities already because of the energy efficiency upgrade that's being done at the wastewater treatment plant. And I understand that's still in progress, and so we hope to be able to benefit from additional decreases in utility expenses in the future. The water fund, as of the end of the fiscal year, also ended with a healthy reserve of 60%. Revenues also came in over budget slightly, and our operating expenditures for this water fund also came in slightly under budget. Revenues, once again, increase in water service charges. We have the new homes, and then homes no longer being vacant. But we do know that, looking into the future with the decision made tonight to go to reduce the number of watering days, that we will be experiencing decreases in revenues. And so your action prior to, to that conservation effort of adopting amended rates would take into consideration, or did take into consideration, that decrease in revenues, and we would be imposing the drought surcharge during the time when the declaration has been brought down by the state. Expenditures, we did have a reduction in actual water meter replacement costs in anticipation of the water meter project that we would be having. We didn't want to go out and replace water meters, knowing that we would be replacing them soon should the city council decide to proceed with the rate increase. So overall, tonight's recommendation was just a presentation of the fiscal year ending 2014-15 financial status for the city's major funds.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? So you know public comment, I bring it to the council for either comment or adoption or acceptance of the financial status of the city's major funds.
I'll make a motion to approve item 6.2.
I'll second.
A motion to approve item 6.2, and a second.
Council members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.3, resolution determining that an unreasonable hardship will result unless the judgment in the Barnum Construction, Inc., et al. versus City of Riverbank Superior Court case number 350298 is paid in installments.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just for the record, I'm an hourly employee of Churchill White, have no financial interest in any of the litigation. And seriously, this case was handled by Neil Costanzo out of Fresno, who's a litigator as well as a city attorney. He actually won a substantially similar case for the City of Oakdale. But for whatever reason, after 10 years of legal wrangling with Barham, we received an adverse judgment in the same case for our city. So under those circumstances, and in light of what you just heard about the status of our general fund, the law allows us to stretch that out over time if it would be what's called an undue hardship. And as you saw, with the, this would come out of general fund money. So in order to do that, you'd have to have massive layoffs and the resultant loss in service, and that would be considered an undue hardship under the law. So what we're going to do is file a motion with the court, provided you approve the resolution, to pay the judgment off. We're going to ask for 10 years, that's the maximum amount of time. So that's the long and short of it. It's not something we want to do, but again, in order to protect the integrity of the general fund, in light of the financial position that the city's in, that's our recommendation at this point.
State in the resolution, we cite the police officers going down to 15 regular officers, recline and staff layoffs, and that to do this, we would have substantial staff layoffs. And would take years to get back to our, would take years to get back to an accepted reserve.
Yes, you basically wipe, wipe out your reserve in one single shot if you paid this entire judgment off in full, as it stands.
Although I don't like kicking the can down the road, I think that's prudent on this one, in my opinion. And that monies today are more valuable than monies in the future. So it would be, in my estimation, an acceptable kicking it down the road. In our appeal or our motion, are we going to be very specific on, on the hardships?
Yes.
Because this is very generalized.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I, all I'm asking. You're the lawyer, you got us into this mess. Okay, before I bring it back to council, is there any public comment? Bring it back to council for comments and/or recommendations.
I'm just glad that we have the opportunity to stretch it out. It's needed.
If they approve it.
If they approve it, well, we can still present it. So I'm glad we have that opportunity. So I make a motion, we approve item 6.3.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve in a couple of seconds. Item 6.3.
Council members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.4, consideration of 2015 League of California Cities Annual Conference Resolutions. At this point, I'd like to make a motion that Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez be the voting representative.
I'll second it.
Now we, now we can talk about it. Anyone from the public wish to comment? Anyone want to talk about the resolutions? Okay. All right, I'm here for, we have a motion to approve in a second. Barbara Martinez being the voting delegate.
Was, I'm sorry, I missed the votes.
I made the motion. Cal Campbell made the second.
Thank you. Council members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And now you have some work to do to present the city's positions.
Thank you. Yes to everything.
Item, item seven, staff comments.
Yes, we have two brief comments. I'll start with Donna Kenny, who provided an update on the Serval or the building that formerly was the Serval.
Good evening, council. As you know, staff has been patient and gracious with the property owner as he worked through delays with his insurance company. He has since given staff a number of promises, which he has not kept, and has caused substantial delays in the cleaning up of the property. He was given a deadline to come into City Hall today at 4:00 p.m. with an asbestos removal permit from the San Joaquin Valley Pollution District or face a fine. The property owner did not meet his deadline to obtain the asbestos removal permit. However, he did start the process yesterday with a partial payment, but cannot complete the application until he has a contractor in place and provides the remainder of the fees. Staff issued him an administrative citation today for noncompliance in the amount of $100. Staff spoke with Troy Lee of Lee's Demolition and Excavation, who has agreed to do the demolition for the property owner. Mr. Lee stated he was able to get the 10-day permit waiting period waived by San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. So as soon as he finalizes all the paperwork with the property owner and the company removing the asbestos, he will start demolition of all fire-damaged buildings on site. The goal is to complete the demolition by late next week if all aspects of the project fall into place.
And again, just to clarify, this is the building that's at the corner of Atchison and Third that was the former Serval Liquor Store and is currently burned out. I don't think I made that as clear as I could have at the beginning, and so I just wanted to make sure it was clear for everybody listening that that was the property we were speaking to because I know that the city council, as well as myself and Donna and other members of the staff, have received numerous complaints in regards to that.
Thank you, Jill. I do have an additional item to bring up, and this involves properties at Claws in California. Staff discovered grading and dust clouds at two parcels at the intersection of Claws and California at the end of the school day today. Grading commenced on the properties without a permit or a water truck on site. Community development and public work staff was sent to the site and stopped the work. The property owner was told to remove the trucks and equipment, bring in a water truck to wet down the dust, and then report to the planning and building manager, which did not happen. I directed staff to issue two citations pursuant to Riverbank Municipal Code 155.11A7, which is failure to obtain a grading-clearing permit clearing, which is a violation of this chapter, and RMC 155.11B1B for a major grading-clearing permit and initial fine of $600, depending on the severity of the violation, and a fine of not more than $600 for each day of violation where the offense is a continuing offense. But such fine may not exceed $25,000. There are two parcels involved, therefore two initial fines total $1,200. If the work starts up again without a permit, fines will total $1,200 each day of the offense. The truck traffic and dust created a hazardous situation for the schoolchildren and the drivers. This behavior will not be tolerated. Thank you.
Donna, thank you very much for being very proactive in that. I would also point out that it may sound severe, but this is the second time, in the very early stages of this project, the second time that the developer has proceeded without the appropriate permits. And so we basically, based on these activities, we know that we're going to need to watch very carefully to make sure that the City of Riverbank's development protocols are followed during, of course, this project for the health, safety, and well-being of the future and current neighbors. So, thank you. Thanks, Donna.
Thank you.
And then I'd like Annabelle Argular to provide an overview of the dates for the upcoming community workshops on district elections.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. We would like to invite the public to three public forums that the city will be conducting to receive input on the proposed district election boundary maps. And those dates are Wednesday, October 14th, Saturday, October 24th, and Thursday, October 29th. And so for further details, they can go to our website, they can--
Can you provide times for those dates?
Sure. Wednesday, October 14th is from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Saturday, October 24th is from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And Thursday, October 29th is from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. I was going to give all the details, but I know that we're wrapping it up. So please visit our website. You can call us at City Clerk. You can email me at citiclerk@riverbank.org, or call Administration, 863-7122. And we will be sending out to every mailing address in the City of Riverbank. They will be receiving an advertisement, both English and Spanish, with all the details. Thank you.
That concludes staff comments this evening.
Council comments. Councilmember Jones Cruz.
I just have one quick comment. I just appreciate everyone's staff reports. Again, and I know you guys have heard it before, you take very detailed, complicated information and make it easy to read so that we can come in here and make informed decisions. And I appreciate all the hard work that goes into all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Just a quick comment. In Modesto, the other day, there were three people that were injured by being hit, pedestrians in crosswalks. Times are changing, it's getting dark earlier, and people are in a hurry because school's going on. So just drive carefully and watch out for pedestrians and yourself.
Thank you. Councilmember Tucker.
I also want to echo Councilmember Jones Cruz's comments about appreciating all the reports, the staff reports, consultant reports, contractors' reports. Everything is done with an amazing amount of detail and thoroughness and quality that makes our job so much easier, that as well as our strategic planning process. And I think it makes better, informed counsel and better decisions made up here and to the benefit of the citizens. So thank you all.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
September is Hunger Action Month, and thank you to our food banks and meal programs that provide a vital service to our communities, and thanks to the cushioned food sharing group that hosted their spaghetti dinner to raise funds for the food bank here in Riverbank. And thank you to all of you that came out from the community to help to clean up the Stanislaus River access areas on Saturday and at Jacob Myers Park. So just thank you for helping. I personally collected three bags of trash in about 15 minutes, so.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
It was fun. It was dirty, but it was fun. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to send out a congratulations and a job well done to Supervisor Chiesa, who was very instrumental in getting AB 107 passed. He used his influence, and he has considerable, since he is CalCog, to the governor and his staff, which initially brings back an RDA-type of atmosphere. We'll use it quite judiciously if we do use it. But most importantly, it put the negative bailout for the other counties and cities that couldn't use their funding correctly for property taxes from Prop 13. And now that negative bailout is now balanced. We will not be receiving the $80 million we lost, but we will not be paying $3 million a year to other counties. We'll be keeping those funding. With the water reduction program that we just approved, I'd like to see that extended, or at least for staff to consider not watering two days a week in places such as mediums, and possibly stop watering for the next six weeks immediately, because trees and bushes will not get that distressed over the next six weeks just prior to the starting of the weather, the water season. That's it, rainy season. I'd like to encourage everyone to come to our financial forecast, which will be held on the 12th of October. It is one that will take our projections of what our revenue streams are going to be, how we can increase revenue streams. As you saw, 60, over 60% of two entities alone, that's property taxes and sales taxes, and how any glitch in the market could adversely affect our general fund. So with that, we have closed session of item 8, which will not be happening, but it would have been conference with legal counsel and existing litigation. Do we have any public comment on item 8? Seeing none, I close the meeting. Thank you, and have a good evening. Evelyn, thank you.